...nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, it's 5:59. Well, according to this clock, the official clock in this room.
By the cellular network, it's 5:59.
I apologize for my perceived tardiness.
Okay, there you go. Okay, this evening's agenda is modified just a little bit. It has been posted correctly, but I had not been aware of it until I came here. It was appropriately posted in time. We were going to have community development, well, welfare and community development have swapped times. So this evening, we're going to be doing welfare, and that's going to be the first on the agenda, and we're going to do community development the next time. Okay, so that's the biggest. Okay. Is there anything you'd like to start with, Eileen? Well, according to this, according to this, we're doing welfare, parks and rec, summer day, solid waste disposal, highway, equipment maintenance, buildings around, public works, and then wastewater.
Okay.
So if there's something you want to change, let's do it now.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
And when Pat comes up, I don't have any remarks about our budget specifically.
Okay, okay. So, any questions from anyone about the procedure? Okay. Let's do first non-number 25, which is welfare. Pat, you want to come up, Pat Murphy? We always have a big debate with your department every year. Just kidding.
That's sarcasm.
That's sarcasm. I should be more clear. Sarcasmically said. Good evening, Pat.
Good evening, everyone. So, um, it would be okay with the com-
Go ahead. Don't pay attention to the warning.
I missed it, okay. Um, I'll just give you a summary of the budget as presented. And for, I might go into a little bit more detail because I know we have a new person, so just wanted to explain a little bit. So, the welfare budget has, I think, it's on. All right, let's get it closer. Is that better?
Oh, much better.
Getting it closer, okay. So, the welfare budget is divided into three sections, the administrative, the health and social services requests, and then the welfare, actual expenditures part of the budget. So, for the health and social service requests, we get yearly requests, and this book is all the requests that I get, so there's a listing of requests, what they're looking for, what they do. We also get, like, audit reports and other factors, and we're looking at the requests. I take all the requests, I look to see how much money that adds up to. This year, it adds up to $125,080, that was what the request. And so, we've, I parted down to $75,000. So that's what you're seeing here today. There is one new agency, it's New Hampshire, 2-1-1, and they put in a request for $1,000. So they're a new request. And the reason they brought forth this request was because they are doing more in terms of coordinating homeless. When people come and they're presented to be homeless, they are now the central intake of where we send them all to have all their information gathered, and then that way, then they forward it to us if we, they feel it's an appropriate measure for referral, but basically, this is a new state way of doing things, so that is one of the reasons they requested funds from us and other communities as well. So that is the only thing that's new, and anything else that was up or down, I did based on critical services that I thought were important. The big thing that really has made a change is the mental health and drug misuse services that are now, have increased, which has brought more, quite a lot of relief to a lot of us in dealing with this population. So therefore, the, you know, the two agencies that have been dealing with this a lot, which is Harbor Homes and Greater Mental Health, they, I, when I, when I was figuring it out, I gave them a little bit more just because of their, that they asked for that increase because of those reasons. But basically, I tried to keep to, if they, only if they asked for an increase, and if I thought it was critical enough services, and if they haven't gotten an increase for a long time, too. So those were some of the criteria I was using when I was figuring out and trying to stay within a certain amount of money. And does anybody have any question about that section?
Peter?
Pat, like, when we give money to Greater National Mental Health, which I think is a great organization, I think it, they're, they're up over their heads in clients at this point. But what do they provide for the town, just as an example?
Well, we refer them, they have a sliding scale basis on pay, so no one is turned away if they have, if they can't afford to pay or don't have health insurance, don't have health insurance, it covers mental health, because not all health insurers cover that. So it is definitely a situation where they do cover everybody, and they don't look at, you know, their inability to pay. Where if we were going to send someone to any other provider, like, any other psychiatrist or counselors, they wouldn't, if you can't pay, they're not going to take you on as a new client.
Okay. And I, and I'd add this, is one thing that probably a lot of folks don't know, is that they work with our police department for the various mental health issues that we, that the department deals with in town, they'll have people come out and help mediate, and they, and they know many of these clients, and that's an invaluable service.
Correct.
Tom, did you want something?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly, you started out talking about this new one, and it's listed here as 2-1-1 United Way of Greater Nashua. Is that the organization name, it's strictly United Way organization, or?
Yeah, it, it has two parent organizations. One is, it has funding through United Way, but it's actually run by Easter Seals, so it actually, the agency that manages it is Easter Seals, but they get funding through the United Way. So it was labeled as a United Way program because the, most of the initial funds for 2-1-1 came through United Way.
Do, do we have other organizations that are funded by United Way that we've donated money to as well, or?
I'm not sure, you know, I haven't looked at United Way's budget in a long time, but they do fund some transitional housing services, and there are several agencies, like the Front Door Agency, Harbor Homes, and although those are the only two that we do that have those kind of transitional housing and housing services, but I know they're, they have a lot of different places out in the community that they do contribute to, I just don't know them all.
That's fine. And you mentioned an increase for the mental health issues, and I'm looking through here trying to find out where that came from, because your budget's only gone up in this department, this area, by a thousand dollars, and it looks like St. Joseph's Community Services took the biggest hit. Is that Meals on Wheels, or?
Well, the, I'm just looking to see the, the, under the request, so there was one that actually came in far less, and I'm trying to remember which one it was.
Well, Keystone came in lower.
Yeah, there was a couple that came, requested lower. If they request lower, then I'm gonna-
Then you give it to them.
Yeah, I'm going to do that, so, yeah, like, yeah, St. Joseph's Community Service, oh, and they, theirs request went down, I know why they went down. They were, they were at $13,100, and then they requested $10,016.
Oh, they only requested 10, okay.
And the reason is, is because they don't have their van anymore. So we were funding part of the transportation services that got people back and forth between the, the community center and people's homes. Now they have a volunteer service, so they don't have the van anymore, they don't hire, they had like a driver that they had to compensate and things like that, so because of it, they requested less because of that reason. So there are some that did request less, I think it was that one, and just the-
That one and Keystone look like the two big ones.
Keystone, I, yeah, and I was, I was actually surprised Keystone requested less because they're really on the front lines of this substance misuse.
Substance abuse, yeah.
Yeah, so I was a little surprised at that one, but-
Maybe they've got the sources.
Yeah, no, when someone requests less, I just, you know, have to assume that they know what they're doing.
Thank you.
Eileen?
I, I think what Peter was alluding to, and I appreciate from you, is that I don't think people realize how much scrutiny you give to each of these programs. So it's not just, we're giving them a little bit more because we don't, we're watching the budget and that kind of thing, and I know you watch the budget, but I know you scrutinize each one of these to, for instance, find out how many residents they're actually supporting, residents of Merrimack they're supporting, how many hours, all those kinds of things are scrutinized very carefully, and obviously, you have a, you know, very good handle on this.
Yes, I do request statistics when they do their proposals, so that I'm looking at, I'm looking at their total funding, where they getting their funding, are, you know, how many people are they serving on the whole, what percentage is Merrimack?
Right.
And what services that they offer. Fortunately, I work with so many of these agencies, I know a lot what they do anyways, but sometimes, you know, they'll request a certain amount, like, for, like, but ones that don't work worth that off from this, like Opportunity Networks, so they would be ones that, you know, that I'd have to look to see, you know, because I don't know them as well, so. But usually, but, you know, 2-1-1, I do work, you know, since that has evolved, it's now a state database, so anybody can call 2-1-1 and get information about almost anything. I mean, it's, it's actually been a very great resource, but they've taken on more and more challenges as the times going on, and their latest challenge is there, that they've become the central intake for all our homeless population, so, so it's been a big, that's been a huge challenge for them to try to incorporate that in, you know, in their existing trainings and people, so.
Finley?
Thanks, thanks, Pat. If Nashville were to send whether unfortunate homeless people up to one of the extended stay hotels, do they come, do they then place them on our, on our welfare budget, or how might that work?
Okay, usually, all right, this is a very tricky question, because residency can be, yes, gain instantly, they just have to be in your community. However, we have an ethics policy that we try to get all communities to follow, and one of them is dumping, and dumping is a big, you know, issue. Actually, I think, quite honestly, Nashville has more of a problem with people dumping there because they have all the services there, so they tend, people tend to be put there so they can be closer to the services, but in our ethics policy, you know, the community that put them there is responsible for continuing there as they are considered homeless, so any person put in a hotel is considered homeless, and therefore, until their status changes or they move on their own, then at that point, that person then would become the responsibility of where they voluntarily decided to relocate or permanently relocated, you know, so, but like, for example, and I have to do, and I do this all the time, people who need to move, all right, they may request first month's rent to a new location, I will make sure that, okay, they can afford it before I actually, you know, help them with first month's rent, you know, because I don't want to be dumping in that community a person who can't afford to live there. So it is, it is a big problem we have across the state, it happens more to the larger cities than it does to towns like us, it mostly happens more to communities that have shelters. So it is something that happens, you know, to them more often, but we try to get communities to follow this ethics policy, but there's no really teeth in it, you know, so therefore, all we can hope is that people will be, will be following it.
Use good faith?
Yeah, it's a good faith thing, and I've had, I've had, you know, other communities call me and say, hey, you know, a Merrimack resident just ended up in, in Manchester here, and they came in our office looking for rent, you know, and to, and I'll, if I didn't put them there, you know, then, then, but if it's something they need first month's rent to it, you know, and I think they can afford it, I'll say, if they can't afford to come back and see me, then I'll just have them do it, and I'll pay the first 30 days. So it's, that's what we kind of try to do with each other, so that we're not dumping on each other. You know, it's, it's a very tricky question, like I said, because it's all, it's nothing really in a law that says one way that they have to do this.
The reason I ask is because I do know that Nashville has sent people to one of our extended stay hotels, and I don't know if they've come over to your office at this point, but that's why I was curious as to how it might happen.
Well, that extended stay, actually, I have gotten some calls from people staying there. Most people I've found, though, have found it all by themselves, because they just look on the internet for the cheapest place, and that's the one. And so, I have not gotten anybody that's put there. Usually, Nashville is pretty good, they will call me if they're going to put someone in Nash, in Merrimack, or they'll call me saying, this person requested to be put there, we're going to pay this amount, but they're usually pretty good. I don't really find that Nashville Welfare does that, so they're usually very good in that response.
Thanks, Pat.
Peter?
Pat, how many, how many homeless clients do we have, or did you, did you help out last year?
I would say probably about 20 families usually a year, and it's, it's, a lot of them are, it, the definition of homelessness has, has a different, different ways of looking at it. Like, for example, if you have a family who's doubling up with another family because they've lost their housing, that I consider a homeless situation, but they are staying with another family, so they're just kind of doubled up. But then you get some people who have no place to go, so, you know, those are people we offer shelters for always first. If there's no shelters available in the state, then we will actually only house then in a hotel situation, but there is homelessness, we try to prevent at all costs because it's more costly, so I do a lot of prevention of evictions, because it's a lot cheaper to prevent eviction than it is to deal with someone who's, I have to put in a hotel. And so there's, there's a lot of prevention that we try to do, and there's a lot of people who will call me from the hotels, but I would say, the new hotel has, I've gotten, generated more calls, but from that hotel, I've only gotten four calls for the last six months, so it's not as bad as I, I had thought it might be.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you pay those bills directly to where the money has to go to, correct?
Yes, all, all assistance is paid directly to the vendor, so the landlord, to the electric company, to the oil company, to the gas company, you know, even food, if I have to give a food voucher, it's a food voucher, and therefore, then the Market Basket or Charis will return the voucher back for me, for payment. So everything's done by voucher, no cash is exchanged.
And I think that's important to note, because I think people at times, you hear people talk about the abuse of some of the, some of the support they get, welfare support and everything, and that's great that you're on top of it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good point, good point, Peter.
All right.
Eileen?
I know that we're not discussing this tonight in terms of revenues, but I think it's important to point out that when, whenever possible, if somebody is in their own home and we're giving them welfare assistance, she places a lien on their home so that we can recoup the money back. And in the past year or so, I think, you know, maybe this year was over $30,000 that you got, you'll have to give an amount to them.
Over $68,000, actually. It was a record, record year for reimbursements, yes. We were very fortunate this year, and, and it's so unpredictable, it goes back and forth. Last year, we only got $250, and then this year, we got $68,769 and some odd cents from July to now. So it's kind of one of those things, you just never know what's going to happen, but usually, when the, because of the lien situation, when people are able to sell their homes, we do get paid back at that point, and, and there was a couple of situations. We also got an unusual trend where a lot of people are wanting, if there's a, this property foreclosed, normally, once they go through the foreclosure process, we don't usually get anything after, you know, the taxes are paid and, and the mortgage is paid, there's usually nothing left. But for some reason, we've been getting some realtors who don't like that non-clean deed, so they, they want us to take it off, and the only way, you know, we could take it off is if it gets paid. So for, we've gotten a couple of those, too, so it's just been an unusual thing, because most, the most, most don't really care that there's a foreclosure, they kind of consider that it was taken care of, but I don't know, that was unusual situation in a couple of times, so, so all those, you know, because it happens quite a bit, sometimes, if someone foreclosed, we might not get anything on the lien, so, but, yes. And so, yeah, we go back and forth on the revenues, since last year, it was only 250, so this year, it's 68,000.
So, Pat, a welfare lien is second?
Yes. It's not considered a-
Not like a tax lien that goes in priority?
A priority lien. Tax lien is priority lien, they go above a mortgage, but we're not above, so we have to go in priority of the way the liens were placed, so it tax, if a mortgage is most likely before us, and then we would be after it, or whatever, so, yeah, we don't have any priority, unfortunately, no. But the, and just the last part of the budget is, like I said, the welfare assistance in itself, and I only did a couple tweaks back and forth on this budget. The unusual part that's, I'm seeing is the, the amount that I'm spending on housing, and mostly to do with rents. There's such a fluctuation, last year, we didn't spend as much, and this year, I'm back to spending just as much I did two years ago. I'm halfway through the years, and I think it's over 24,000, and I've been just dealing with evictions left and right, it just, so it just, sometimes there's no rhyme, reason, but I think it's because housing costs have just gone up, and they've really skyrocketed a lot of places, have gone beyond what we call fair market rent, and, and so it's, it's really been a challenge for people who rent in Merrimack, so that's what we're seeing.
Are most cases augmentation to rent, or literally the whole rent? Because I can imagine if, in fact, the rents are going up, they can't make that difference. Is that what's happening, or?
Well, no, it's, when we do our calculation of eligibility, we base it on a cap of fair market rent, so we use New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority's thing. So if someone comes in and they have a rent of like $1,300 for a two-bedroom apartment, we, fair market rent is only $1,239, so that's the most we'll pay or assist, so I have to then work with the landlord to make sure that they will accept that and not a victim for that month, because I don't want to pay that and then have them be evicted for the difference. But we do have a cap on how much we will assist with, and so, and it goes by bedroom sizes.
Gotcha. Yes, Peter?
Actually, this is Paul. Why do we break out the heating, heating oil?
You need to microphone?
Why do we break out, like, propane, gas, gas, heat, electricity, heating oil? Why don't we just put all that under one type, I guess?
Well, actually, that's, I did it. I actually find, because the thing, one of the things that we do is that some fuels are regulated and some are not. So electric and natural gas are regulated fuel sources, but propane and oil are not. We often run into a lot of problems with unregulated sources of heat, and so therefore, this comes up every couple, so many years where we're trying to legislate, maybe regulating those that are giving us the most difficult problems. So it is good to know exactly what we're spending on each one if it comes up, so it's easier for me to pull it out of the budget if it's a separate line item.
Yes, Eileen?
Just regarding the budget overall, you see a lot more detail here, because you're, you're scrutinizing every line and, and that kind of thing, so really, in the end, you're voting on the bottom line of each budget, but you, while you're doing it, you just have as much detail as possible so that you can make sure that it's, it's, you feel comfortable with it.
And really, having the detail helps you make decisions at the end, when you want to alter things, and you want to make a suggestion as to this line item, what I want to alter, so. Be a lot easier if we said, okay, you have 2% less, you make the decision. Usually, that falls on us. Not that I'm suggesting that, Pat.
Thank you.
Believe me. Don't kill the messenger. Are we all set? Okay, thank you very much, Pat, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Matt, you made it just in time. You almost got moved down.
He actually, he thought it was at seven.
I wasn't going to be surprised, I thought that was true.
So we're texting back and forth, where are you? How much time, ETA?
Okay, Parks and Recreation, tab number 13. Yes, Eileen?
I would just like to say a few things, most of you already know this, if not all of you know this. Matt basically has two budgets, one would be ones that are in the general fund, which are funded by the tax, the property taxes. So this is what we're going to be talking about right now, and this, so this includes some of Matt's salaries, because some of it comes back out in revenues and that kind of thing, but that's confusing. So, so we do, this is the general fund part, and then he has what's called a revolving fund, as you recall, a couple of years ago, it got changed from a special revenue fund to a revolving fund, and both of them are self-funding funds, so there really isn't a lot of difference in them, but what is difficult, has been difficult until we get this revolving fund, was that Matt had to do his budget very months before, and if he had the opportunity to do a new program or something like that, he wasn't able to do it. So this, the revolving fund gives him more flexibility in that if he wants to start a new program, he needs to talk to me first, and then he needs to meet with Paul and make sure that the revenues match the expenditures, and if something doesn't work out financially or for some other reason, or people don't have a particular interest, then he drops them, so. And just once again, Matt is, I can't keep up with him, which I probably can't keep up with most people, but, but anyway, he is constantly looking for new programs and things to do, and in the time that Matt has been here, I've been absolutely delighted by what has happened in terms of Parks and Recreation, because it used to basically be a summer camp only, and now there's all kinds of things that they do, murder mystery nights, and after, and- they do. Murder, mystery nights, and after, and various things for trips for seniors and everything like that. So I just think it's, it's really wonderful. And I think that people should understand that our, my goal and your goal was to, when we hired Matt, was to do just that, which was to make sure that, that the Parks and Recreation Fund wasn't just for children, but it represented recreation and quality of life things for all ages. That's all.
And with that, nice introduction.
Yes, thank you, Eileen. Good evening, my name is Sharon, members of the council. Thank you for your time this evening. To just kind of touch on what, something that Eileen just said, you know, this past year, in 2017, we offered two-hundred-and-thirteen different activities that some people could sign up or participate in compared to, say, four years ago when we were doing about twenty-five. So we've really grown significantly in a fairly short amount of time. Yes.
Could you repeat that again, those numbers again?
Two-hundred-and-thirteen different things you could sign up for.
Versus twenty-five?
When I started, yes. And so we've been growing steadily, and obviously, people have been looking for those activities. And so we're getting a great response to those. But aside from kind of the individual programs, our special events have been taking off. You know, the, the annual Halloween party, the winter carnival, the Easter egg hunt, you know, those types of things, you know, we're, we're seeing record turnouts every time we offer it. When looking at my budget this year, which I believe is eighty-eight, page eighty-eight, Paul? Okay. There was only really a couple of line items that had any significant changes this year. You know, we tried to be frugal with, you know, with our taxpayer-funded resources. So I want to just go through and kind of highlight a couple of them, just so you're aware of what they are and what the reason for those increases are. The first one is the, the water line item. It's eight-two-four-four. And this is a fairly sizable increase of about thirty-eight-hundred dollars. And as I understand it, this relates to Bishop Field. Apparently, MVD wasn't billing the town for the water usage. And they've suddenly realized their error, and now they are. And so this is obviously, you know-
Who dropped the dime?
I don't know. And I don't know if Paul has any more on that particular thing, but that's my understanding of that particular line item.
It shows three-thousand three, so I don't know. Well, there's two lines of-
Approximately.
Okay. The, to answer that question, MVD came back and tried to bill us for ten years.
That's pretty funny.
That is pretty funny.
Because of their statutes, and they didn't get ten years out of us, but figured we should at least put it in the budget this year and pay it. So that's why the increase of the water.
And this is the reality of what we use?
Correct.
Really?
Yes. Yeah, we use around three-thousand dollars worth of water a year.
Wow.
So why are there two different lines that say Bishop Field, one oh-nine and one eleven?
One's got five thousand and one's got three thousand.
The one that has three thousand should be taken out, should be, that should just say Turkey Hill and Martel. Because that's what we use for those fields.
What number are we talking about? I want to look at the line.
Eight-two-four-four, oh-one, one-three, two-four-four.
Gotcha.
So Bishop Field is really five thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a lot of water.
It is.
In comparison to the other fields.
It is, but it also includes shut off and turn on. They charge us to shut it off and turn it on.
For the season, you're saying?
For the season.
But they do that at all, every field, right?
Right.
Yes, they do. I mean, presumably, you shut it off at every field.
Yes.
Yes. It just seems like a disproportionate number, but I don't know. Bishop Field is out by the middle school?
Yes.
Yeah.
Eileen?
Excuse me, Tom. I just, I'm wondering if we're maybe paying a little bit of it retroactively or if this is the actual amount for one year.
Yeah, I wonder too.
Looks like you'll have to find out and let us know.
Yeah.
Anyway, moving on, the next one that has a significant, significant jump is the-
Let's hope, I'm sorry, Bill, before you move on.
We're paying MVD to turn off and turn on a valve. Serious question.
Yep, apparently.
Serious answer, yes.
And do they have special technique or?
Is it a right-handed valve versus a left-handed valve?
They have the wrench, is that what you said? Okay.
I, I think the question is a valid one. And what about the other fields too?
Yes.
Could you find out about the water situation and let us know?
I will.
I have it written down.
Thank you.
Paul, water situation. You all set, Bill?
Yes, I am, thank you.
To be followed up. Hold on a second, Kyle. Apparently, Kyle Fox has additional information.
I don't have the whole answer. Is this all?
Yeah.
I don't have the whole answer, but to answer part of Bill's question, the turn-off and, the turn-on in the spring and shut-off in the fall also includes the backflow preventer test. They take, they actually take the backflow valve out of the irrigation houses and store them inside so they don't freeze in the winter and put them back on in the spring. So that's part of the cost. It's not just turning a valve on and off.
But that should be all the fields, not just-
Correct. That's at every field, yes.
So maybe that's-
But doesn't the irrigation companies do that? Or a plumber?
They could.
Yeah.
We don't for, for the irrigation fields. Merrimack Village District does it for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which seems like a lot of money, that's all.
Well, we don't know how much.
Yeah, let's look into it. We're going to get that information from Paul, right, Paul?
Got it.
Thank you.
We're going to get it.
We're going to get it. Okay, go right ahead, Matt.
I'm just reporting the number I was given.
I'm trying to say Paul here.
Anyway, on that same page, the last line, I'm the eight-two-six-zero for telephone expenses, has a, has about a two-thousand-dollar jump. And there's a couple of different reasons for this. The town started working with a new time clock software, which among the things that it'll do is it ties directly into the financial software. In order to make that work, it has to be on a dedicated internet service. Over at the camp, we don't have that. They've been using a mobile hotspot in the summers, which in and of itself is expensive, but it doesn't work with the time clock. So this new time clock system, say, is not only my time, you know, having to do fifty employees of data entry every week as well as his staff's time in the summer. And then the added benefit to that is that it also gives us Wi-Fi access to the function hall, which we didn't previously have.
Okay, so that's twenty-six-eighty-nine. Oh, okay, never mind. I've answered my own question. Never mind. Eileen?
I don't mean to steal your thunder, Matt, but you'll see on the line that is called infrastructure under Parks and Recreation, I, I need to say for the people, eight-five-oh-five, thirteen, eight-five-oh-five on page ninety-four. You will see that we have requested a large amount of money for, for the pond dredging and dock replacement, which would be at Wasserman Park. This has been something that has been on the radar for quite a few years. And this is, this is a, you know, kind of expanding of the philosophy that the council has had relative to making their parks more beautiful and taking care of their parks. But again, you know, I mean, you, there's a, there's a cost-benefit analysis that you will have to do. The other thing is that Matt has requested the, what was that one, Paul?
The docks.
And?
The docks and dredging, those two.
And what else?
The, the floor for, the floor. It's not in that part, it's in another one, because I didn't put it in. The floor for the function hall.
Can't be. It's, it's a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, if, two-forty-one, twenty-five, forty is ninety. Hold on, I'll get it.
What was it?
The function hall floor?
No, 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 no. What?
Skate park.
Skate park, okay. It was a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that he requested for the skate park over at O'Garret Drive. And I thought that the kind of the decision consensus of the council was, when you met with the school board, that if that ever were to come to fruition, it would be a warrant article on the ballot at some point, but not now. So I removed it.
Pete?
And, and in light of that, the skateboard park itself, but the, I know that we're looking at the, creating that ice skating rink slash volleyball area, is that money included in here?
The ice skating rink and the volleyball situation is only going to be about ten thousand dollars. So it's going to be absorbed in the, the DPW budget. He's not aware of that, but in the DPW budget. And Paul will be working with the numbers with Kyle. But there's sufficient funds to get that done within this year's budget. So in terms of dates and when all that's going to happen, everything over at O'Garret Drive, Matt has or, and/or Kyle, as to when each of those components, particularly the tennis courts, will be removed as you have already instructed.
Yeah, that's not done yet.
No, it has not been done.
And is the, I know this, the construction of a basketball court at the MYA, is that in the budget?
No, it isn't. Because we, we really, there's still some discussion that I have to have with Kyle as it relates to, there was, the thought was, as you know, the basketball courts, a new basketball court was going to have a contribution, significant contribution from MYA. And it was going to be actually located in ten thousand. That's pretty cheap. So, cheap skates. So anyway, that, that, so they were going to contribute some money. He threw me off there. He was, so they were going to contribute some money. So there was some discussion about whether or not those tennis courts could actually be located on the MYA property because of the, the Babuzik Lake, the Babuzik Brook over DW, DW Highway US Three project. When that occurs, there's going to need to be a different entrance into the MYA property. And Kyle's concern at this point is that we could very well build the basketball courts and then have to, you know, dig them up or do something with them. So more, more thought has to be given into that and what the future might bring.
Yeah, I just, yeah, just the money itself, I didn't know.
It is not in here.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill has a scowling face. Did you have a question?
Clarification. I thought with the basketball courts, that they were looking at building them proposed behind the MYA building and not along DW Highway. Because if that's the case, then the aggregate of moving the road is immaterial because the basketball courts could be behind the building.
Well, but that's the point. If, if in fact, they're going to be reconfiguring that area, would it be wise to put the basketball at the present entrance? Because the new entrance is going to be in the back, is that correct?
Yeah.
That was my memory, anyway.
But I thought we were talking like down, like parallel to where the, where the ball field was, not, not on the other side where, where the bridge is. I thought it was going to be down.
I thought it was-
No, I don't-
I thought it was in the back as well.
Parking lot.
It was in, it was in that extended parking lot that's-
In the back.
Runs by the, the brook. If you go off the edge-
It wasn't down. It was in the same level as the building.
Correct.
But, but Bill, your point is well-taken. If it's going to be located there, how does this entrance and exit really have anything to do with a, with a-
Exactly.
You know, amenity that actually does, isn't bordering the road. But as I said, I am, Kyle and I are discussing that. And, you know, obviously, the plans are underway as, you know, there's a long way before that project, the, the bridge project actually gets done. So he's just proceeding with caution as far as his advice on the basketball courts. So, and, and as far, you know, you can add, obviously, add anything that you want to the budget. But I thought that we would add things that we were, you know, that, that were of priority, such as the beach, which a lot of people use.
Okay, thank you.
I think now you're at, oh, not yet, Paul?
What was your question about water again?
We've already gone by that.
I know, but I just want to write it, no, I just want to write it down so I have it.
The question I have is the Bishop water situation. Irrigation fields have a do with the cost of the shut-off on what, is it just Bishop or other fields?
Martel and Trudowsky.
And how much is water versus the-
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I got what you wanted.
Gotcha.
And I think why Bishop is five thousand because it appeared to be a little high for some of us.
Okay, got it?
Got it? Okay.
Nancy?
What? Jackie?
I'm assuming, I'm, I'm trying to remember what the configuration of the basketball court is next to the skateboard park and how they are all together. My assumption is that the basketball court will stay put until we do have a place to receive it.
No.
It will be gone. That you, we can't demolish the tennis courts without interfering with the basketball court?
We, we have been through this so many times that I actually have to go pick up my folder again and read it. Because, you know, I, I read it and then I forget because it's so complicated.
The last is we'd asked the school-
Yes.
-to leave everything until at least the expiration of the lease, right?
Well, the, the tennis courts actually have been declared as obsolete-
We agreed to that.
-by the federal government. So we have the ability to do it right now.
Right.
So, you know, Kyle slash, sorry, Matt, can talk to you about, you know, the timing of that particular project. But it's, it's ready to go as far as authorization already. The rest of it is, is not until after the lease expires.
Which is in June thirtieth.
July thirtieth.
July thirtieth, okay.
Remember, I was saying that over and over again?
Yeah, it's weird. Yeah, that's a weird time, anyway. Did you turn?
Yeah, yeah. I just got some questions about the pond dredging, dredging and dock replacement.
Yep.
Didn't we just do something on Natticoop? Didn't we do some milfoil reduction or something? So what's the difference between what we spent with the state to this?
Milfoil is an ongoing problem in Natticoop Lake as well as other places. So there's been, I'm not even, how many years, you know, Kyle, how many years milfoils have been going on?
Since I've been on the council, at least six years.
Yeah, and Nancy Larson was here when that was all going on.
But what that does is they come in, they have divers basically come in usually four or five times a summer in removing the specific milfoil plants. Because the problem is, is you get into it and it just breaks apart. And as soon as it breaks, it spreads like crazy. You know, Natticoop Lake's been slowly coming down on milfoil, but Porshu Pond is growing like crazy. So it, it's a-
And I believe that's a state program as well, isn't it? And we get some money from the state.
We, we do, but the funds are diminishing. So what we have done is maybe two or three years ago, you know, we, maybe four years ago, we had been lax in funding some of those milfoil treatments. And so, you know, maybe we waited a year that we shouldn't. And, and then, I think this was maybe even further long ago, maybe even before I was here. So time goes by fast. So, so anyway, and so the following year, we really needed to catch up. So not only did we need to treat, but we all, we needed to pull plants and we needed to treat, have the divers and the treating, treatment. So we've, as, as you know, we fund that every year. And whatever amount is available from the state, we get, we apply for. And even though milfoil never will go away once it's there, we can keep ahead of it so that it minimizes the cost. So for instance, you probably won't need to treat as much if you, every year, you have divers go in. And some of the lakes are wonderful in the fa, I think it's Natticoop- And some of the lakes are wonderful in the, I think it's Natta Cook. Natta Cook, they have an association, as you know, that are very active, and they, they go out and they pull the plants themselves and they, you know, they, they've gotten instructions and they monitor boats as they go in, and they put markers in the water to show the divers where they've seen the milfoil. So it's really, you know, they've really been cooperative about that.
And stay tuned because it's coming this way, February.
Now dredging, my understanding is dredging is just making it deeper.
Dredging has to do with the beach.
With the beach.
And I'll get to that right now, in fact.
There you go, go for it. Yes, Bill?
I wanted to circle back to the skate park, please, if we could. Do we have one more year at its current location?
That's up to the school board.
Up to the school board, yeah.
So the school board could come back within the next couple of months.
And say, we want everything off by July, yeah.
So I guess, I mean, my concern is, my concern is contingency. Do we have, if the school board decides and asks us to remove it, do we have the, are we going to have the wherewithal to pay, pay for the removal? That's number one.
Yes.
And then number two, we have the larger question of trying to find a location in town that can replace the amenity that we have currently. And then you get into the finding the location, then you're talking budget numbers to putting something, something new in the location.
$150,000. Elaine, go ahead.
I think it's premature to talk about that, in my opinion, just because I think that it really is something that needs to go before the taxpayers, before they make a decision whether or not they want to spend $150,000 or whatever it is to replace the skateboard park if we have the land. So we're still, you know, vacillating back and forth because we can't, we can't junk up, to coin a phrase, Watson Park by, you know, moving, keep moving things over to there.
Watson Park?
That's right, yeah. So we only have limited space in town on land that we own. So what I'm saying is, I don't believe, except on Bishop Field, which we do not own, to my knowledge, what?
We own Bishop Field.
We own it? Okay. Well, there's some kind of covenants on it. So I think it says actually no structures can be built on it. And so there's a question there about access, about supervision and that kind of thing, whether, so there's been discussion going on about where actually a skateboard park could even be located. So it's really.
I'm just concerned if the school board decides that they want it, that they want it terminated, we got to remove it, that means the kids are going to be, be without this summer. And I think it's, it is, it is.
Can I suggest?
It is, it is not having a contingency plan in place to address that issue for the summer on the off chance that the school board decides that they, that they want to have that removed.
Ken, go ahead, Elaine, then I'll say something.
I, again, in my opinion, I think that's on the school. If they want to remove the skateboard park, they have to, they need to speak to their own constituency about why they removed it and what they're planning to do about it. And if it is that they're planning to put it back on the town, then it's really not your, it's really not your.
We just have to get rid of it and then we'll.
And we'll have to do, well, then we have to talk about.
In the future, we'll decide what our next move is, right?
Right.
So this summer, if they want it to go on July 30th, then it goes.
It goes, and then, and then kids are shuttling down to David W. Dean down at, down at Mines Falls.
Right.
To the skateboard park down there.
And at that point, that discussion could be made about putting it on the bar, putting it on the warrant.
For the following year?
Correct, for April.
So I guess that's a topic for our retreat in June.
Probably.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and really we have to wait for the school to make a decision.
Well, I, I agree with you, we can't do anything until the school decides.
It's premature before that.
It is, I don't necessarily disagree with that, but, you know, I, I feel like we're doing the kids a disservice that if the school board makes that decision.
We're not doing a disservice.
I understand that, but we've, we have managed, we have managed that amenity for a certain period of time. So I think there's, there's some shared response, and at least where I sit, I feel that there's some shared responsibility as it relates to the skateboard park. That's all I'm saying. You know, we're looking at a year of potentially kids not having a place to, to go and skateboard. Thank you.
Peter, did you want to say something?
You know, I, I feel like kind of going over this again, we had this meeting.
Right.
And we had the meeting with the school board, and I, I mean, I thought I was, I was clear on it, and unfortunately, I think, yeah, there's going to be, there may be a period of time because of the cost of replacement, and I'm not happy about that, but, but I also thought that we had some type of understanding with the school that they weren't just going to come right in and demand that it gets ripped down, so I just.
That has been our request.
Thank you.
All set. Okay, Matt, go for it.
Okay.
Jackie?
Well.
Sorry.
Yeah.
You've got to raise your hands a little.
Yeah, right, right. I'll do the wave. About the skateboard park, it was out of our control that, that that leased land was going to disappear, and if it disappears, it's certainly not our fault. I doubt that the school will swoop in and not give a year's notice, and I think the only reason that they would is because they want to put a structure there, that's my, that would be my hope. And I think that the taxpayers ought to, I think it should be, what makes something go on a warrant and other things not? $150,000, I think is up to the people.
Yeah, I, I think it's something that, it's a, an amenity that costs a lot of money, and it's really kind of up to the people about this particular one. It's, 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 you know, as I said, I think it's going to end up being an awful lot more expensive because we're going to have to acquire some land to put it on as well, that is not in the back of beyond and, you know, away from the eyes of the world.
The one that Amherst just put in is right by the highway intersection where 101 crosses the, actually, under Babuza Lake Road in Amherst Village, and it's like an older thing, it's accessible. It seemed like a pretty good spot, maybe we have a spot like that.
Yeah, not to belabor the point, Madam Chair, but do you think it's possible that the council could consider putting a warrant article onto this year's ballot, looking to develop a capital reserve fund dedicated to a skateboard park, and that we allocate X number of dollars into the capital reserve fund, at least to show the people in the community that we are serious about replacing this at some particular point in time?
Might I suggest that after we've done all the review of the departments, you would certainly have the opportunity to include that in your budget?
Thank you.
Adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be, and that provides you enough time, perhaps, if you want to do that, to get the data to do that.
Thank you.
All set?
Almost finished, I'm checking.
Okay. Matt, go ahead.
Okay. So moving on to the waterfront improvement project, I've handed out some packets here. It shows kind of current conditions. Now, these were taken obviously last fall, but, you know, Wasserman Park Beach is really the only official swimming area for Merrimack residents, and it's really not a great place to swim. It's muddy, it's just muck, it's stagnant water, and there's no, you know, kind of water circulation. We, at one point in time, the, you know, there's an H-shaped dock there, and that center section of the dock, that, in front of that center section, used to be about two feet deep of water. Now we usually start the summer somewhere around five inches, and by the end of the summer, it's basically just mud by August. I think at one point, some point in time, the lake level has dropped, you know, as part of it, but also, again, it's just all the erosion coming down the hill and, and has kind of filled it in with organics and, you know, whatnot. So what this project does, and I've been working with Dawn from, from DPW since last year, kind of trying to figure out what the best way to solve this problem, keep it from happening again. But basically what this project would do would put in a temporary cofferdam so it can dredge out the swimming area, get rid of all the mud and the organics and, and put in erosion controls around the beach, grade out the beach, adding new sand to the beach. And then the last part of that is to actually replace the dock system itself. Over the last couple of years, we've been having to make kind of more and more repairs to the docks. Usually the kids that work for me in the summer have kind of limited skill set, so right now we're keeping up with those repairs, but I'm not sure how much longer that will last. Those docks, as far as I can tell, the last replacement of them was 1992, which was probably shortly there, shortly after the town took control of the property in the first place. And one of the things in the, kind of a modern dock system, and there's a picture of it in your packet, our, our existing docks have kind of a, they're wooden, and they have kind of a continuous piece of foam underneath it, so there's no water circulating through there. The modern docks have, it's a different material used, but it actually has channels carved into it for that water flow to keep it going. So once you've kind of excavated all the muck out, now you've got that water that's able to come in and continue to come in, you know, in the future. Working with Dawn, the estimate we've got to do all of that basically is $91,000, and on the last page of your packet has kind of a breakdown of those costs. Yes?
Madam Chair.
Peter?
Matt, I, and I see in the pictures and everything you're talking about needs to be done, and I agree. These pine trees, are they coming out?
I don't know yet.
Huh?
I don't know.
Because I mean, that's half the problem with this beach, you've got those stumps, and they're a hazard, the roots and the pine needles are covering everything. I mean, to me, if we're going to do this, at least take out those two pines that seem to cause a problem there more than anything. Maybe we can think about that? Thank you.
Elaine?
Yes, I, I just wanted to, you know, as you know, anything near the water is very sensitive, so you have to get permits from the state and shoreline protection and all that kind of stuff, but it's a very good point, and we certainly will look at that as part of this project.
Tom?
I don't know, I'm just, this, tough to swallow, $92,000. I know we have two beaches, I know Watson Park is used quite a bit as well, the beach out there. And I know we've had people in the past from out of town using Wasserman Park a lot. I don't know, $42,000 for a new dock replacement, that's great if you're, I don't see there's like a hazard with the dock that we currently have. I just don't.
Can I make a suggestion, Tom?
Yeah.
It'll be very similar to Bill's. I'm happy to agree in where you're going. But this evening, it's really, and you can clarify if I'm in the wrong, then, tonight is to get clarification, more information. The debate about altering what's been presented will be when we meet after the presentations are done.
Got you.
Okay? So keep, and that's what my notes are for.
Okay.
Okay? But if you need more information in order to do your presentation, now's the time to ask the questions.
Got you.
So it's similar to what Bill was talking about.
Okay. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if he's, if he's questioning the validity of keeping this current dock. That's a valid question, right?
Okay. Okay. I, I thought we were talking about more of the money and.
No, I, I just.
Okay, your point's well taken as well. I just guess we need to be, I want to be able to stay focused on what. So if you want to go ask that question, please do.
Okay. Can I talk about skate park again? No, I'm just kidding.
You're trying to get back at me, that's.
Very good, Tom.
No, I mean, if you want to talk about the validity of the item, that's a whole, I think that's fine. Because I don't disagree with you, by the way, Tom. Jackie?
Yes, where did the dock pricing come from?
I talked to, there's a dock manufacturer over in Hudson called FWM, I think it is, but they sent me those estimates.
We just used them for our new dock system. There are not very many dock companies.
Tom?
You talked quite a bit about water circulation, and these are floating docks, right?
Yes.
So there is water underneath them, circulating. Are you, are you referring specifically to the surface and leaves and things being able to get in and out?
Yeah, that's part of it. And now what's interesting is to the left side of the dock, where it's kind of the open sand, to the left of those pine trees, we don't have nearly as many of those problems in terms of the mud and the muck and, but it's kind of a combination of factors, you know, you know, kind of the erosion coming down the hill, the, the sleeves coming in, the, you know.
Trees.
The trees, you know.
Yeah, I understand, but I just, you make a comment that the water can get in and out, well, it's going right underneath it, they're floating docks, so you need to be a little careful with how you're describing what you're talking about there, I think.
And they get moved during the summer, too.
Right, well, I mean, the other problem we have there, too, is that, you know, we're nowhere near ADA accessible down there with those docks. You know, right now you get down to the end of the sand, and you've got about four feet of mud that you, so you have to kind of jump to the dock, actually in the picture, I think there, it's actually sitting on the shore at the moment, but it's mostly mud right in front of it, so you just kind of jump to the dock, you know, which is something we would obviously want to try and fix, too.
Elaine?
Do you think that at some point, that whenever you choose, that that might be a better question for Dawn, who would be looking from, from an engineering point of view rather than from, because has, have you looked at it, Dawn? Yeah, okay. So whenever you think that's appropriate.
Do you want any, can we move on, or? And then more questions? Okay. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay. Those were the, kind of the main areas that I wanted to highlight out of the general fund budget, and kind of before we move on to the revolving fund, is there any other questions in that section of things?
Saying, did you have a question?
Sorry, that, you talked about some specific items, but there were, that, just for the sake of my short-term memory, you have a, a part-time program manager.
Yes.
Or a full, full-time program manager. What was it? Program manager is listed as part-time, and there's also one listed as full-time. She was under 8104 and 8107.
She's basically an administrative assistant that we had part-time before, and now she's full-time last year.
Okay, so you're moving them.
Is that what you're talking about?
I think so. The program manager under part-time has been moved to a full-time position.
She was originally hired as a part-time employee last year, and then last, as part of last year's budget process, you made the position full-time effective in July.
Okay, and just for clarification, the 6545 GF revolving fund is where the split and the funding comes from?
Right.
Okay, but your salary is strictly out of the general fund?
No.
It doesn't say anything in here about a split between GF and revolving fund?
You will, you will see that, you will see that later in the revenue. So you'll see it in the revenue, and in, you'll see it clearly in the expenditures of the revolving account. So they pay, you'll see the administrator's fee, which is Matt and his administrative assistant, and, and some of their time being sent over to the general fund in terms of revenue. So you'll see the expenses.
So that's going to be the end of the summer day camp.
And the, and the other programs that are in the revolving fund, each fund, each program will have a certain amount of money that gets, it will be an expense, so you'll be able to see it under each program in the revolving fund, and then you will see it in revenue in the general fund.
Which is under the day camp tab, which we're going to be talking about soon.
Well, there's actually two different things that I've requested of, of Paul, and one, I, I realize that this has been in place for a couple of years, but I want, what I wanted to do is I wanted to make sure that you got a sense of what we were spending so that you could see actuals for prior years, like you do with every other one. So you see, you see actuals for two or three years for the, for the summer day camp program, which was a special revenue fund, and then going forward, you start seeing the budget and actuals for this other program. But it's just more to, to give you a sense of, you know, it's, it's really kind of a sense of continuity, and I believe that you'll see it, having gone up because of added programs, revenue and expenditures.
Paul? Paul?
With every special revenue slash enterprise fund slash revolving fund, there's a director allocation. And what happened is, we take Matt, and we directly allocate a portion of his salary into it, like Eileen said, and it comes back as, as a revenue. You'll see that for voice water treatment, you'll see it for police outside detail, you'll see it for this revolving fund. So, there is, even though it doesn't say what the allocation is, there's a whole formula that we go through that we've been using for 20 years now.
Where is this located? Day camp, I mean, the revolving fund?
Day camp. Just keep going. So, we use this formula when we break out department heads' time and things of that sort, and that's how we come up with the director allocation. If you'd like to see the director allocation, direct allocation formulas, I have the spreadsheets. I'll bring them next meeting.
That's fine. I just, as I was looking at it, the program manager lists a general fund slash revolving fund percentage or whatever. The director didn't, and so I was wondering if that was indicative of anything, and you're saying, no, it's just recorded differently?
No, it's because, it's because we do gross budgeting, so we have to put the whole expense in there, and then we show it, we show it as revenue coming from the revolving fund to the general fund. I know it's, it's...
The whole, the whole amount is in there for the program manager that's under the other full-time as well, right?
That's right, but you'll see in the revolving fund, which is actually a separate fund, the revolving fund, which is a separate fund that has nothing to do with the tax rate, gives money over to the general fund. So, it comes in as revenue, and you'll see it as expenses in the separate fund in each of the programs. It'll be more clear when you, when we get to that part.
Okay.
And if it isn't, just ask.
It isn't, okay. And the Bishop Field question was answered. The Fourth of July Celebration Parade and Fun Day, we used to get a lot more detail on that as far as money to hire bands for the parade and cost of fireworks and all those kind of things. Now, it's listed as one number. Is that something new?
For the past couple of years, we have been, the Rotary, is that right? The Rotary has been taking it over. They had been doing it a lot of the time, and we, you know, we were having issues with trying to keep track of all the revenues and expenditures on that kind of thing. So, basically, we turned that program over to them, and they're doing it, and we're paying them a lump sum of, I believe, $10,000 to, to, as our contribution to the event.
The remaining balance is then broken up between fireworks and the bands. So, it could be 1515 or 1812, depending on what the fireworks come. Whatever, we go out to bid every year for the fireworks, and whatever the fireworks come in at, then that's the remaining money that we have for the bands. So, we spend up to $40,000. So, 10,000 of it is allocated directly to the Rotary, and the remaining $30,000 is split between fireworks and bands.
You pay for that?
The fireworks and the bands, yes.
So, Paul, $10,000 comes, so the $40,000, it's all, it's town budgeted from Fourth of July?
Correct.
And that covers fireworks and the Fun Day?
Fireworks, the bands, the fireworks, the parade, and the Fun Day.
Okay. If, and I, you know, I, I guess I'm trying, I'm wondering, because over the past few years, I guess I don't see a lot of attendance at the Fun Day after the parade. You see it, I mean, you see the parade, and then you see the fireworks, but it doesn't seem to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there are a lot of people attending the Fun Day. And I know the Rotary works very hard, and I'm wondering if our efforts, if they, you know, would be better off on doing something with an old home day, but I don't even want to get into that, but just, it, I don't know, is there a lot of attendance there? To me, I don't see a lot during, during the daytime until the fireworks.
Right. We have asked the Rotary that question, and we've asked them if they will continue this, and if they want to continue it. And every year, the Rotary comes back and says, yes, we see it beneficial to the town, and we see it as a benefit to us, so we do continue it. If at a case in point or time in the future that the Rotary says that they do not see a benefit to it anymore, then it would stop. I'll be more than happy to contact, or Matt, because finally got them to deal with Matt, have Matt contact the gentleman who runs the Fun Day, and get a little word for you, Councilor Albert, and then the rest of the council, on if they, what they see as the benefit.
And I know, I've worked with them over the years, and I know how hard these folks work. And they're, but sometimes I look and say, geez, is it, are they getting the most bang for their buck? You know, because you, I think most people go to the parade and the fireworks, and during the day, they're off doing other things. But just be something, I'd appreciate it if we could look into that.
All right, and it all depends on when the Fourth of July falls, too.
Yeah, a lot.
A lot on the Fun Day. But we'll get that information for you.
And I remember one year when it must have been 100 degrees a day.
More than 100, yeah.
Yeah, it was boiling hot, and I was sampling cupcakes or something, judging cupcakes or something.
That's a fun job. Okay, are we all set? Okay, now, are you done with the parks and records? Do you want to go on to the...
Well, we can move on to talking about the revolving fund if you're ready.
All set?
We're so ready.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes.
We all set? Okay, let's move on. To the fourth from the back is the tab that says day camp, but it also includes the revolving account, right?
Right. Starts on page 160.
No, it starts on the tab called revolving fund.
The detail is 160.
It's the revolving fund tab.
Oh, it depends upon whether you're doing it digitally or not. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
So...
For us non-digital people.
I should have, I can highlight these for you for another meeting, but if you look at, under day camp, it is, where is it?
8375.
8375, yeah.
Director allocation, revenue transfer to the general fund. You see $29,000 there, kind of closer to the bottom of the day camp program, 85, 8375. You see 29,415. That get, that's where the payment goes back to the general fund, but it comes into the, you know, as it says here, the expense is here, so the revenue from the programs pays for this, and it gets transferred over to the general fund to offset their salaries.
I can't find 8375.
Okay, it's, it's in, it's in eight, nine...
Apparently, it's under revolving fund.
Okay, the number, I have it here, I forgot it right there.
If you had hard copy, I guess.
So, may I continue? On that same line, on that same topic, I should say, if you look under summer playground camp last two weeks of August, that's a relatively new program. You can see some of the director's salary is being, or is that, is that so? Or is that a different, are we actually paying a different person besides you?
Well, this is a different program, but yes.
Okay. No, but I mean, is there an allocation for yours?
Yes.
Okay. And that is actually on page 161, director allocation, 1128, $1,128 are coming from this, from this particular program. And then if you look down at Camp Trek, Trek dash teen trip and travel camp, eight weeks, you can see director allocation, kind of in the middle of there, 6488. And, and again, under the Merrimack Summer Stage Theater, there's $524 to, one lineup from the bottom. And it goes on with each program, you can see that. And we can, we can, when, when you're ready to deliberate, we should probably have already have added all those together so that you can see how much of the two of their salaries, Matt and... I need, I know you need to spread them, but what I'm saying is that we need to know, we need to add each one of them up, so that they know how much Matt, the revolving fund is paying over to the general fund for Matt and his administrative assistant.
It's the $40,295.
Where is that?
It's on the top of page 162, there's a star there. It's also on the top of 161. But if you were to go through and add them all up, it does equal that number.
Okay. All right. So, is everybody clear on that? It's okay if you're not.
And the $40,000 goes to where?
The $40,000 goes to the general fund as revenue to offset the gross expenditures of the Parks and Recreation Director and his assistant. So, you'll, so there's a net cost. So, you take, you know, you take the expenditures for those two positions, it comes in as revenue, which you don't have to raise in taxes, and then you could, you would see, if you added up all their salaries and benefits, you would see, subtract out $40,000 is coming into the general fund, it just, as I said, doesn't have to be raised in taxes. And you would know how much the taxpayer, taxpayer part is paying for Matt and his assistant's salaries and benefits. Is that clear?
Yes.
Yes. You don't have to say yes if it's not.
No, it is.
Okay.
Continue.
Eileen already kind of talked about kind of the revolving fund in general terms a little bit, but you know, the biggest benefit to us is obviously, is it gives us that flexibility, you know? With the length of our budgeting cycle, you know, we don't necessarily know in October of 2017 what I'm going to do in July of 2019 for a program, you know, because public needs change, and you know, people ask for different things, and you know. So, this allows us to kind of do things on the fly and add as we go, as long as they're able to support themselves. And that's obviously the goal, is those programs support themselves as well as coming in for that, you know, that, you know, the, we're covering that director allocation. As we do these, you know, as all of our program revenues come in, we actually do a daily kind of reconciliation with, with Paul and his staff, Paul and Tom, on the money, you know, and here's, you know, here's the net, here's what it is after, a lot of our transactions are with credit cards now, so here's the, minus those transaction fees, you know, this is, you know, what we're expecting to get. You know, Paul, when the funds actually get deposited into the town accounts, Paul sends me a report back to confirm that the numbers match, and obviously, if there's ever a discrepancy, we go back and look at it and figure out why there is. And then, you know, realistically, it was, you know, September of 16, when we kind of first started using the revolving fund, and Tom Bullen and I have been, spent the last kind of three days going through and kind of reconciling things from 2016 through, up through December, just again, to make sure that numbers are matching, and you know, we found a couple of little discrepancies, things that had been coded wrong, or you know, those kinds of things, so that obviously, we're clear on exactly what's in there and what's not in there, you know, so that we have money to pay the bills. We talked about the director allocation already.
I just, sorry. I just wanted to be clear that we don't do it every two or three years, try and figure out what the bottom line is. It's just, you know, all that's done every year and as each program comes through, but I think what Matt's saying is that they were just fine tuning, you know, $50 here and $50 there. But it is reconciled regularly to make sure that the new programs are paying for themselves.
Yeah. And it was just, this was kind of our first year, really, of it, and you know...
Nancy? Yes. This, this revolving fund?
Yes.
When the last day of camp arrives?
Yep.
It's August 25th. There's been money going in and out of that fund. Is that money ever, I think, Eileen just answered this, that money is never gone completely, is it? Because the idea of the revolving fund, isn't it to have some, a nest egg in there left, so that the, maybe the summer camp money goes into the Halloween event?
It could, in theory. I mean, Halloween's funded out of the general fund, the, you know, that...
Oh, if it had revenue.
Right, but yeah.
Say you opened it as a craft fair or something.
Yes, in theory, it could. We...
I just, I just wanted to say that it has a very small balance. I want to say it's maybe $4,000 at the end of the year. It's not any big nest egg, but, and the idea is, as you know, is to provide the service pretty much at our cost, so that the residents have the ability to do things at the most reasonable cost.
Yes.
So, but we don't have a big amount of money.
I didn't mean to imply that.
Oh, no, I didn't think, I didn't think that you did. But I think that it's important for you to know kind of where we stand.
Sure.
Yeah.
Lost my train of thought. So, the, again, kind of going back to that director allocation, you know, the percentages for each of those kind of major programs is based on kind of how big of a role it plays into our time, but also just how big of a program it is in general. So, obviously, the Natticoop Day Camp is the largest one that we run, so it's paying kind of the lion's share of that, you know, $40,000 allocation. But obviously, the more things that we're able to run down the road, you know, will allow us to maybe reduce it here and give it, you know, have something else paying for it, you know. You know, one of the things that's always challenging is obviously, you know, particularly with summer camp, is to stay competitive. You know, our biggest competitor, obviously, is YMCA Camp Sergeant, who's across the lake from us. And you know, right now, we're, we're about $30 a week more than they are, but at the same time, we offer meals where they don't. We also do swimming lessons, which they charge an extra fee for. So, we're, we're close, but we've also gone up on camp $30 in the last three, in the four years that I've been here. So, we're trying to stay level this year and just let things catch up a little bit, you know, before we, you know, worry about trying to go, you know, again, it's that balancing act of, of trying to stay competitive and keeping things going.
How interesting, Jeff.
We had, last year, somewhere in the vicinity of 750 individual session registrations. So, it's probably, you know, 300 families, give or take, you know, signing up for multiple weeks, but yeah.
So, that's 750 in an eight-week period?
Yeah.
So, 750 kids come through the day camp in eight weeks.
So, previous years, what are the numbers been? Just, you don't...
Yeah, we, we, when I first got here, the camp had been in decline for several years in a row. We had, the second year I was here, we went up a little bit. The next, the second, the third year I was here, we had a big jump in 16. We kind of leveled off a bit last year. Camp registration actually opened up Tuesday of this week for this summer, and I've already had 70 registrations come in since Tuesday. So, I think we'll be, we're looking good already compared to how we typically do when we open registrations. So, you know, it fluctuates year to year, you know, it's, it's always kind of interesting, you know, some years, the kids that have been traditionally going to Camp Sergeant suddenly decide they don't like that over there, and they come to us, and then we get them for a couple of years, and then they go back. And, you know, we try to fine tune our program every year to keep up with the interest and make camp unique and different and...
Have you doubled it or not?
I don't know that we've doubled it. It's, it's certainly higher. I don't know exactly how much higher off the top of my head, but it's definitely gone up. Like I said, there had been three or four years prior to me getting here where it was kind of steep decline, and part of that was program, we gotten stale, but also because we had had a lot of maintenance issues with buildings and things not being maintained. And once we started fixing those up, that helps, you know, have to help the enrollment numbers, because it wasn't a scary... I had some buildings at that, you know, that first summer I was here where parents are like, you're using this building, really? And, you know, and we've kind of dealt with most of those.
And they weren't up to code. They were not up to code.
Right.
They were not up to code.
Right, and we've solved most of those issues over there, so we have more options. Okay. One of the new ones that we had started last year was our, our Camp Trek, which is our teen kind of field trip program, and one of the things we were seeing was, you know, the twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-olds, they're kind of, parents still need the, the childcare, need something, you know, activities for the kids to do, but they're getting, they were getting bored with kind of traditional camp, and so the, the purpose of this one was for kind of twelve to fifteen-year-olds, they basically spend two days a week kind of doing the traditional camp activities, and then the other three days a week, they're off-site kind of exploring New Hampshire, so one day they might go to a state, hiking in a state park, another day they might go to the Polar Caves, they might go to Canyebi Lake, you know, those kinds of things, so last year was our kind of first full summer, we had a good response to the program, did really well, we've already had a lot of people, you know, kind of, our numbers were increasing every week all summer long, and then, you know, we're already getting a lot of the kids that are, that were eleven last year going, "Oh, I can't wait", you know, it's, it's what's next, so we're expecting a fairly sizable jump in enrollment this year, you know, potentially doubling in size, you know, depending on, you know, how it looks, but that's the goal, and, and it's, right now, it's, it's an age group that's tough to serve, and there's not much out there, the Y doesn't offer this type of a program, at least that I could find, and, and so again, it's something that's, we think is gonna continue to do well and will continue to grow each year. Recharge right now for that, you know, the regular camp was two-ten for residents, two-sixty for non-residents, this one we're doing two-sixty-five and three-fifteen for non-residents, which is basically, it's covering the cost of those field trips and the busing and, you know, those kinds of things.
And I don't think I've ever discussed with you the numbers, how many, and if you have that, how many resident, non-residents were there this year?
Um, I don't have the, the, the exact breakdown with me at the moment, but it's, we're probably ninety, ninety-five percent residents, the non-residents we tend to get are the ones that live out of town but work in town like at Fidelity or, you know, those kinds of places, we don't get a significant number, you know, it might be five a week out of a hundred, you know, it's, it's not a, it's not a large number.
Now, do you charge more for non-resident to resident?
We do, yes.
So, it's, it's two-fifty versus, two-thirty versus three-ten, is that what you said?
So, the, the regular camp was two-ten versus two-sixty for a non-resident, so it's fifty dollars more, and then the, the Trek Camp is two-sixty-five, and it's three-fifteen for the non-resident, so again, it's fifty dollars more for, for those. We had been running a half-day preschool program the last two summers, and it was doing okay, but it wasn't taking off really, there was, just wasn't enough kids that wanted the half-day experience, you know, and so we're actually discontinuing that one this year, that was our Junior Adventures Program, but we've actually also decreased, the, the Natticoop Day Camp used to start at five, and we're actually gonna start at four this year, so we're kind of still serving most of the, the preschool camp was three-to-five-year-olds, so we're still getting at least the four-year-olds that need the full-day care, you know, we'll still have an option for them, we just won't be able to do, deal with the three-year-olds because full day at camp would be tough for a three-year-old, I think. And the other one that we had started last year was our kind of School Vacation Week Program, which again, wasn't being offered anywhere in town, the, the, the Y ran's a limited vacation week program, but it was only out of the Nashua Branch, and it was only a nine-to-one versus, we're doing a full day with lunch, and, you know, those kinds of things, our February and April Vacation Week last year sold out, we actually had to turn people away because I just didn't have enough staff available to work.
Eileen? One of the things that Matt does and, and we evaluate when we add a new program is whether we're stepping on the toes of a business that provides that service, or whether it's a service that actually doesn't, we don't find exists and that is needed, so we always take into consideration that we don't want to take business away from, you know, Merrimack businesses.
And like I said, the Vacation Week was something that wasn't being offered, so it has had a really good response to it. Those were kind of the, the main things that I wanted to highlight, the, in the revolving fund, that Summer Playground Camp is something we've been looking at trying to do for a couple of years now, which was usually, Natticoop Day Camp ends usually somewhere around the eighteenth of August, and there's usually two and sometimes even three weeks before school starts, so this year, we're, we're, we're moving forward with the plan to offer, you know, programs during those last couple of weeks, you know, for those that need it, you know, so that parents aren't forced to take a time off, you know, and we'll see how it goes, and again, it's the first year trying it, and, yeah, we'll go from there.
Okay, any other questions?
I, just one on the Parks and Recreation General Fund here, Capital Reserve Netting.
My, uh, microphone.
The Capital Reserve Funds, the netting for Trudowski Field?
Yes.
What, is this new, is it a replacement?
This, this was put in last year's budget, it would be a new netting system, Paul and I have talked about installation for the spring.
Is that for like foul balls going off of right field towards the kids?
Left, left field.
Left field?
Left field, the parking lot, covering the parking lot.
All the cars?
Yeah.
This was a, a project that was on the Town Council's agenda during the retreats, and we brought it forward this year to get, to get the fencing, the netting put in, so we feel, it's very, it is very expensive netting.
The same netting at the police station, Crossman Police Station?
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so...
I, I wasn't there for that, so I was just curious.
I wasn't either.
Thank you.
Okay, all set? Well, you got the ringer tonight, didn't you? Okay, I think you're relieved.
But I wasn't last on the agenda this time.
That's, you almost. Okay, solid waste disposal, number nine, something has come up that I have to leave, but Finley is taking over, so thank you.
May I be recognized, sir?
Yes, please, next on the agenda, solid waste, oh nine.
Yes, but what I, what I wanted to point out for the new councilors is that one of the divisions under Kyle's responsibility is the wastewater fund, so he'll be discussing that, he and Jim Taylor will be discussing that tonight, even though that's a self-supporting fund, so, so anyway, I'd just like to make a couple of comments about Kyle's general, but, you know, in general, so the first thing really is, and Kyle will get into this in more detail, but I just, I want to give you my recommendation on this particular item, it is for a part-time, what's the position called? Custodian?
Full-time custodian.
Custodian, full-time custodian at, at, for the town, which would be under the Buildings and Grounds Department, and he'll get to them as we, we go on, but I just want, I'm talking about generally as far as the DPW budgets, I just wanted to highlight a few things for you, it's under Buildings and Grounds, so there's actually a division, Buildings and Grounds, so that position is a new position and will cost approximately with salary and benefits sixty-two thousand, fifty-eight thousand dollars, so, and we had a meeting with she, the, the police chief, who's here, and, and Matt Casperius and Kyle to talk about actually sharing that position between, between the three departments, so even though they're all within the general fund and that doesn't, so that doesn't lessen the blow of the six, fifty-eight thousand dollars, it's just, I'm supporting it because it's, it's augmenting the services that we really need, cleaning, special projects, cleaning over the, the Police Department, park, kind of beautification, kind of lawn and plant care kind of things over at Watson Park and that kind of thing for Parks and Recreation, and, so that's, Kyle will get into that in more detail, but I just wanted to tell you that I am, you know, I'm supportive of that, and that's why. The other thing that's kind of, it's kind of troubling to me in the budget as things have evolved beyond when this came in, is that the HVAC system that you'll see in the, where's that at, Buildings and Grounds also, I believe there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there, and that would be a straight expense, it's not coming from a Capital Reserve Fund or anything, and that is, and again, Kyle will get into it, he's more, he knows these kinds of things more than I do, but I've talked to you about this before, about, about these two buildings here at Town Hall and the heating and cooling systems of the buildings, I realize that it's a very large expense, and as we progress through this, I'm finding that, and Kyle is finding that the expense is actually quite a bit more, so what I, and what I would say to you is that the, the HVAC system here is the, are these, what I would refer to is if you stayed at a cheap motel, maybe ten years ago, they had, that, this is what our heating and cooling system is, so they're, you know, they're these units that, I'm, I'm not sure what they're called, but they, they would normally be, I've seen them in ho- in hotels, not to say that I always stay in cheap hotels, but, but anyway, used to, so I could go on vacation, but anyway, so they, they basically have a high and off for both heat and cold, and they sound like a jet engine when they're on, so often we have to shut them off, even though it's cold, because we can't hear somebody on the phone, or we can't hear somebody in our office, and then there's no flow, so as you know, that, for instance, in my office, you, the, the unit is in my office, and if my door is closed, there's no unit in the outside office, so, you know, it, it's, it's very difficult. More importantly, in the past year, we have had a couple of incidents where they actually started smoking, and, and the, the fire alarms went off, and we had to have the fire department come down, you know, no damage was done, but one of them actually happened during the weekend, so they're really not, what we have right now is really not safe anymore, so the options basically are to, to buy all-new ones of this type, to basically replace what we have now with a new sleeker version of a cheap hotel heating system, and, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or to pay a significant amount more to redo the whole, whole thing, and I, Kyle, again, Kyle will get into the numbers with you, but, you know, it's kind of a, you know, it's, it's, it's a difficult decision to make because it's a very big expense that would be made all at once, and it's not coming from a Capital Reserve Fund, so I, I just wanted to really point that out to you, and I don't necessarily have a recommendation yet on that, so, and I, I think, oh, and then the other thing is, as we pointed out to you during the budget presentation, that one of the biggest increases in the solid waste budget relates to the, a small amount for the, for trash, because our, our long-term contract that we have, we probably have maybe three or four years left on it actually, have a very good rate, but it goes up maybe a dollar a year per ton, so that's going up a small amount of money, maybe eighty-five hundred dollars because we have eighty-five hundred tons, right? Eighty-five, eighty-three, sorry, eighty-three, so, and then, but the, the biggest part has to do with recycling, and we, we talked about that a little bit, so, and the, the situation is actually getting worse, as far as the value of the recyclable materials, whereas we used to get a small amount per ton to have somebody take the, take the recycling away, now we're actually having to pay to have somebody take it away. Again, it's cheaper, still cheaper to recycle for, for the town than it is to throw it in the regular trash, so it's still a good, not only for the environment, but it's, it's a good financial decision to make as well, so you'll see an increase there, and pretty much that's all I had, had to say about it, for now.
Great, thanks, Eileen. Hi, Stephen, Kyle, whomever would like to, do you have anything more to offer?
I do.
Okay, I guess you do.
Thank you, Town Councilors, thank you, Eileen, for the introduction, I'm pleased to be here tonight to present the six budgets of the Public Works Department, I'll be having the different division heads of, of each group join me up here, up first is the Solid Waste Division of Public Works, and joining me is Steve Dumas, he's our foreman up at the transfer station. I thought I, this year, I would give a little brief introduction of what each division does, and, and a listing of what personnel we have in each division, so the Solid Waste Division facilitates the disposal of trash, recyclables, electronics, demolition, appliances, brush, et cetera, for Merrimack residents, and we currently have a staffing of six full-time employees and one part-time employee, and I should mention that you all have a copy of this presentation in front of you, if you'd like to take notes or ask questions. Overall, the solid waste budget is up thirteen percent, about two-hundred-six thousand dollars, of that, seventy-six thousand is in the operating and personnel expenses, the biggest chunk of which, as Eileen kind of mentioned, fifty-one thousand of that is due to the increase in tipping fees and recycle fees, the tipping fee increase is from sixty-nine to seventy dollars per ton, which equates to eighty-three hundred dollars a year, and the single stream fee, we saw quite a big increase, and that went from twenty-five dollars to over fifty-four dollars a ton, with a net cost of almost forty-three thousand dollars extra.
Yes, Eileen, I forgot, I changed roles, I can't just sit here in my world.
I just, I'm sure that I know the answer to this, but the increase in operating and personnel expenses, seventy-six thousand dollars, could you please explain that increase?
Sure, that's the, the personnel side of those costs are the increases to health insurance, to the, the contractual raises that the employees received, and the associated costs with that, social security, et cetera.
Okay, so, can I just ask you this, Kyle?
Sure.
So, seventy-six thousand dollars does not include, clearly does not include the things in eighty-three fifty-five, right?
It does.
Uh, okay, I'm confused, so, so it's, the tipping fees are eighty-three hundred, single stream fee increase is forty-two thousand, so those two numbers together come to fifty-one thousand dollar increase, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so where does the seventy-six thousand come in in addition to the personnel expenses that you discussed, because we don't have really that many employees for it to increase in personnel by seventy-six thousand dollars?
Sure, so when I, when I look at the budgets to try and, try and explain them... George, when I, when I look at the budgets to try and, try and explain them, the Public Works budgets are different than a lot of the other town departments, because we rely so heavily on capital projects, which are also in the budget. So I try and isolate the capital projects, which can vary greatly from year to year, versus the regular operating expenses and the personnel costs. So in this budget, in the solid waste budget, the first two sections, which are the personnel cost and the regular operating expenses, went up a total of 76,000. 51,000 of that, 76,000, is just the increase in the tipping fees for the trash and recycles.
Okay, that's very clear, thank you.
Thank you. Then moving on to the capital portion.
But you had two lines here, you say the overall budget is up 13%, but your operating and personnel expenses are up five and a half percent.
Right, because the capital expenditures are part of the overall budget.
But if I add your equipment purchases in the next line, and the 76,000, I get a lot more than 206,000.
Right, and I'll, I can explain that.
All right.
There's other, there's other pages to this particular.
So, so moving into the capital side of it, we're proposing, we're proposing two purchases for the solid waste division. The first one is the trash trailer, and as you recall from last year, we have four of these trash trailers. We're replacing one in the current budget, it's currently out to bid now. We're replacing, hope, we're proposing to replace the second one, this, in this budget. We're going to skip a year, because our equipment maintenance folks rehabbed two of the trailers, because they were in really poor shape, which bought us a little more time. So next year, we're proposing no replacements of trailers, and then each of the following two years after that, we'll look to replace the final two trailers. They were all bought in 2005, when the transfer station first opened. The second purchase we're looking to do this year is to replace the Peterbilt tractor. That's a 1999 tractor that we actually bought used in 2005. It's, it's done a heck of a lot of work for us. That's the, we have two tractors, those are the, the pieces of equipment that haul all of the trash out of the transfer station. Those two pieces together cost 190,000. To Tom's question, the, because their trash trailer was in last year's budget and this year's budget, at 70,000, so the increase in the capital portion of this year's budget is only 120,000. So if you take the 120 plus the 76, that's, that's the real number that, that showed the overall budget increase. I, I kind of mixed showing increases versus totals, and I can see how that would be confusing. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you have on the solid waste budget.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Jackie?
Where does the, the truck haul the trash out of the transfer station? I thought somebody else came in and took it.
That's for recycling only. We, we track, we take all of our trash. Our employees actually load up our regular trash and bring it over to our contractor, who is waste management. And I believe they have a facility in Concord and one in either Rochester and Dover. So that's what the trailers are for, is that, but recycling, when the, when we have recycling, recycling contract, that includes, the recycling just disappears. So we pay them a certain amount of money per ton, which I believe is 55 dollars a ton, and it just, it's transported out, and we never see it again.
Else, Jackie? Peter?
Kyle, what's, or Steve, what's the life expectancy of a trailer?
It depends, I mean, you can get 15, 18 years out of a trailer. But we've, you know, we're fortunate, equipment maintenance does a very good job on them, you know, just maintenance and the rehab, so we've kind of gotten the max out of these. They're, they're in the elements all the time, they're tough. Road salt is huge on them, that's where we've had some issues, where equipment maintenance did some excellent work on refurbishing the crossbars underneath the trailers, so.
And one thing, real quick, if, it's okay, these aren't typical trailers that, that you would think of, these are what, what are called live floor trailers. So the floor actually vibrates, which is what pulls the trash out of it when they get to the, to the dumping location, so that it doesn't tilt.
These trailers don't tip.
So there's, there's a lot more moving parts than a typical trailer, and they're very expensive to work on, because to replace the live floor, or fix the live floor, my understanding is you have to take all of those little bars that, that oscillate, you have to take them all out, put them all back like a jigsaw puzzle. So they're, they're a very high maintenance item.
Back in 2005, when we bought the trailers, the mechanics had told me to refurbish one of those floors back in '05, you were looking at about 15,000.
Now, I guess, and you guys have probably already had this question asked you, maybe over the years, but, is it, at some point, does it become cheaper to contract out the hauling of it to waste management?
No. We did, we did studies back quite a few years ago, I think it was before Kyle's time, Paul remembers.
Didn't we used to pay for that in the first place, when we first opened?
When we first. We started with a private entity, and it didn't work out well.
Yeah, that was about 14 years ago, that, when I first started, we moved to Steve and, and the operation of what we have now, before we had a private contractor in there doing all the hauling and everything, and it became quite expensive back then, 14 years ago.
The private hauls are under a lot more constraints, they got a lot more expenses. We don't have to deal with the federal excise tax on the fuel and stuff like that, so it's, it is cheaper. Even parts, tires, yeah, those things are a lot cheaper.
Eileen, real.
From, from, from time to time, every few, you know, two or three years, we evaluate all of these things. So we evaluate equipment maintenance, for instance, whether that would be better to, you know, contract out some of that, or all of that. Also, the, the transportation of the trash, we, we look at all those things carefully as far as what we can do internally with staff as well, in comparison to what the market would there. And in, in general, what I would say is, as in most things, if you don't, if you don't keep looking at it carefully, that, you know, it needs to be justified all the time, because, but what we find is that with the, the profit margin that's built into what a, what a private entity would charge, that our, our costs of doing it ourselves are lower. But when we find, if, if at some point, that we find that some of those programs are overextending themselves, as far as costs are concerned and, and efficiency are concerned, it's certainly something that we would explore.
What's up Peter? All right. Shall we, yes.
I just, I just wanted to say one thing, as we go through each one of these, one of the reasons why I broke this budget up into these lovely colorful sheets here, is because each of the, each of the, not necessarily all of them, but most of them, solid waste included, there are operating expenses, there are deposits into capital reserve fund, there are expenditures coming out of capital reserve fund, and when you add them all together, it's very confusing if you don't compare apples to apples, how much is going into the capital reserve fund last year and this year, how much is going out this year and the last year. And it can be very, become very confusing, when you, when you don't, you, you, when you look at it, you should really look at operating expenses to operating expenses, how much is being deposited into our bank accounts, you know, for, for the various equipment and things like that, how much is coming out. And so, you know, it's, it's easier if you look at my handy dandy sheet, this is my bible, because, you know, operating expenses is, kind of stands out, and you should, in my opinion, take a look at operating expenses to operating expenses, and then go forward from there. As you know, cap reserve fund deposits are, come from, are, an actual expense of the general fund. It's moving money from the, from that, from the general fund over to a bank account, so that's a literal expense of the general fund. And when we expend money out of a capital reserve fund, it's coming from the bank account. So there's money, there's money in revenue in the exact amount as there is in expenses. So that's clear, I don't know. But you, you'll find that in each of the, many of the, the Public Works Department's budgets, and that's why I think it's, it's good to look at apples to apples.
Right.
So, so, just, just for instance, so if you look at my lovely color-coded sheet here, solid waste disposal had a total expenditure of 51,586,785 dollars in 2018. In 2019, what's proposed is 17, 1,793,611. The, do you have the, operate, those various pages? So, okay, so if you, if you look at, I know I'm talking too much, but if you look at these sheets here, again, that correlate to these, you can see that the solid waste disposal, operating costs, as Kyle said, went up 76,000, which includes the tipping fees and the recycling thing. And then you look at the capital reserve fund deposits for the, for the solid waste fund. Last year, it was 100,000, this year it's 125,000. That is basically because equipment costs are going up, and we need to replenish that fund. So we're putting in extra 25,000 into the solid waste equipment capital reserve fund. And as far as, and then, I don't know if there's other cap on this particular one?
There is.
There is?
Let's get back to that.
Okay. So then there are capital reserve fund expenditures, which are the solid waste.
190.
Is 190,000, which is the two things that you were talking about Steve, is that so?
Yeah, that's the Peterbilt tractor and the trailer.
So those are coming out of our savings accounts?
Correct.
That we've already, that we build up. And the one thing that I'd like to say about that, again, not just the one thing, but, is that we are, and I think I said this to you during the budget presentation, as we're trying to catch up with using the capital reserve funds as they were meant to be, which as you know, is kind of, and I give it a description, you want to buy an ambulance, it costs 400,000, you put 100,000 a year in it, at the end of the, the four years you buy the ambulance. So that's the idea of it. But because during difficult budget times, maybe, before I got here, a couple of years before I got here, it was easy to cut the deposits into capital reserve. So they put in maybe 300,000, but then they take out 1.5 million. So we've been trying to balance that over the years, and have gotten to the point where basically, it's still not working the way that it should. We're, we're putting in and taking out about the same amount every year. So as time progresses, we should, you know, really start building those up, so that we can actually use them as they were intended. So, I'm going to stop now.
Alrighty. We're all set with solid waste? Move on to highway. Thanks Steve.
Okay.
Oh wait. Eileen, did you want to speak to this first, or would you like Kyle to jump right in? I said if you'd like.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, next up is the.
Was that a leading question?
No, if you wanted to, I just want to make sure you had yours, it's tied.
No, I'm not going to say anything.
Where did we go, highway?
Highway, oh wait. Hi Lori. All right.
Next up is the highway division. Here to speak about it with me is Lori Barrett, she's our operations manager, over there. The highway division maintains the town's public infrastructure, including parks, athletic fields, roads, bridges, drainage, dams, cemeteries, and basically anything else that, that comes up, that somebody else doesn't take responsibility for. We're staffed by 22 full-time people and four part-time people, which are the four part-time summer maintainers that we have, that help with mowing of the athletic fields. Overall, the budget is down 19.7%, 1.3 million. And again, that's largely because of the, the capital reserve, or the, the capital project contribution that's located within the highway budget. Most notably, we had the Bedford Road Bridge in last year's budget. This year, we don't have a bridge in our budget, so that's a big reason for the big In the highway budget, our operating expenses are up 114,000, 60,000 of which is personnel costs due to contractual raises and, and other items like that. Mine, 8280, general insurance, went up by almost 17,000. We're proposing an increase of 15,000 in our sand salt budget. And then on the capital side, we're proposing an increase in paving, of 50,000 to get us up to 850,000 for the upcoming year. In, in the 8508 budget, which is our minor equipment purchases, we're looking to purchase a hot box trailer and an asphalt milling attachment for our trackless machine. What that piece of equipment would allow us to do is, you've all experienced the, the large milling machines that, that you see on paving projects, those are the machines that grind the grues into the pavement, they take off a, a portion of the, the existing top coat of pavement. Those machines are very expensive to, to get in, and contractors, pavement contractors don't like to come in and do small quantities of it, they like to do big long runs. We have a lot of roads where we have intermittent patches that, that are problems on the roads, but the rest of the roads are in pretty good shape. Having this piece of equipment, which will attach onto our existing sidewalk machine, also known as the trackless machine, will allow us in-house to go target some of those isolated bad spots, grind out the bad pavement, put in new pavement, thereby extending the life of the, the road. So we're really excited and hopeful that you'll support that expenditure. As Eileen mentioned, highway has a lot of capital reserve funds that we work with. This slide shows you up at the top, it shows you the deposits we've made over the past two years, and what we're proposing for this year. There's four capital reserve funds in this budget that we contribute to. First is the highway equipment capital reserve fund, that's the one where we purchase all of our equipment out of, except for the minor equipment that I just spoke about. This is the more major pieces, dump trucks, loaders, backhoes, those kind of equipment. The second line is traffic light preemption, that's the optocom system that lets the fire department have priority through the traffic signals in an emergency. The Daniel Webster Highway Capital Reserve Fund is a fund that's dedicated to pavement improvements, just on the Daniel Webster corridor. And finally, the Roads and Bridges Capital Reserve Fund, which is also called the Infrastructure Capital Reserve Fund. That was created out of the, there were a few different capital reserve funds a number of years ago, they were all merged into this one, including, there was a bridge capital reserve fund, a sidewalk capital reserve fund, a paving capital, a road.
Road.
Road, yeah, so they all got merged into that infrastructure capital reserve fund. This year, we're proposing 1,505,000 deposits into these four accounts, which is a 15,000 increase from last year. And what we're proposing to purchase out of capital reserve this year. And what we're proposing to purchase out of capital reserve this year, which is, again, funded through the, the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, are two six-wheel dump trucks that we bought in two thousand and five, a three-quarter ton pickup, which was bought in two thousand and six. And we're looking to replace our athletic field groomer, which was purchased in nineteen eighty-seven. We've got good use out of it.
Pardon?
We got really good use out of it.
Yeah, I was going to say.
And then the proposed projects we have in this year's budget, which are funded through the infrastructure or the Road and Bridge Capital Reserve Fund, are drainage improvements of two hundred thousand dollars. We, we're looking to crack seal Daniel Webster Highway. You recall, we paved the southern section up to the South Heagan River Bridge in two thousand and eleven. We played, paved from the bridge to Reed's Ferry Lumber in two thousand and fifteen. Now we want to go back and crack seal the sections that are re-cracked to protect them from water getting in in the freeze thaw cycles. We'd like to start paving some of our gravel roads. In particular, with this year's money, which is a hundred thousand dollars, we're proposing to do Fuller Mill Road and Lester Road. One of the great things about getting Lester Road done, as many of you know, we've been working methodically through trying to get rid of the Y-shaped intersections in town. Lester Road is one of those Y-shaped intersections. We own enough right-of-way at the intersection with Amherst Road to make the swing in to accommodate the, the ninety-degree intersection on that one.
Who's, you, Peter?
No, 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 no.
I thought you were reporting something.
Kyle, you said Lester and what other road?
Fuller Mill.
Fuller Mill. All right. Is there a reason, I know, I thought we, when you discussed this with us earlier this year about Greens Pond Road?
Yeah.
Is there a reason why you don't want to do that? Seems like that's more heavily traveled.
Yeah, there is. So what, what we've proposed in the capital improvement program, the CIP, is a hundred thousand dollars a year for three years. These two roads, they have good ditch lines, they're not heavily traveled. We can take care of them pretty easily without adding drainage. Greens Pond Road is a whole different animal. The, the slopes are, you know, fairly steep. It abuts the drink, one of the drinking water supply areas of the town. So it's going to take a lot more engineering, it's going to take a lot more cost. So we're, we're hoping to use some of this money to develop survey plans and begin the design of it. But the design of that one is going to take, you know, additional time. So we're not prepared to do that yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Though it, if, if money were no issue, that would be our target.
Kyle, this is the paving gravel roads for a hundred thousand you have there?
I'm sorry?
It says paving gravel roads, that's what you're talking about?
Correct.
So, but when you spoke of Lester, I just want to be clear, you were just talking about the entrance to it, you're going to ninety-degree, perpendicular to the road?
And we would pave the entire length of both Lester and Fuller Mill.
That is the plan.
Yeah.
Have we, Lester Road is a very short road. I know there's a neighborhood on the other side, on the-
Temasium, correct.
So is that something, and also Green Road, for, for those roads, I'm just wondering, is that something that we would, if it, you know, if those people aren't dying for it to be done, then I don't know, why would we want to do it?
So there's, there's two reasons we want to get the gravel roads paved. First, we spend a lot of time every summer maintaining the roads. The gravel roads, they, they fall apart quickly. We get, there's probably, if, if you looked at a list of frequency of, of service calls, regrading gro, regrading roads is among the, the top of them, probably right after mailboxes. Just kidding.
No, you're not.
So, so we spend, we spend a tremendous effort every year regrading gravel roads. The other thing that, that's lot, that's been my goal since I was in Lori's seat, is the grader we own, we bought used, I forget when we bought it, but it's a nineteen ninety-seven machine. Replacement machines are over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we can get rid of most of our gravel roads, we may not need to replace that piece of equipment. And that's kind of my goal.
Okay. No, makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that the thought was to pave all of Lester as opposed, I didn't catch the beginning, so. And, but I see the reason why, for sure.
Yeah, and Lester Road, it's about eleven hundred feet. Fuller Mill is about fifteen hundred feet.
Okay. Honey, did you have anything, Eileen, you all said? All right. Thanks, Kyle, sorry.
And just, I guess, add one more piece to it. Well, we would, we, we wouldn't propose paving them full width like we do normal roads. The right-of-ways on both of those stretches are narrower than, than what we would accept for a road today. And they are very lightly traveled. So we would look to do probably an eighteen or twenty-foot width road instead of a full twenty-four-foot road, just because it doesn't warrant that, you know, the full width.
Yep. Very good, I appreciate that. I had just a couple of quick questions. The on-call, I'd never noticed that before in our budget, but the on-call for winter sixteen weeks, do we have somebody on call, so if all of a sudden-
We do. That began with the contract negotiation, I think in two thousand and eight.
Okay.
It, it got inserted to the contract. So at that time, we had three foremen over there, the parks foreman and two highway foremen, and each of them rotated one a night. Now we have two foremen there and they rotate every other night, one of them is on call. So the first call that PD or someone makes for winter storms goes to one of the foremen, whichever one is on call.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Jackie, I can-
Okay. I have a question about capital reserve. Do the, the items that we like at this highway equipment, that can only be used for highway equipment, is that right?
That's correct.
And I guess that's really my question. Thank you.
Then I'm, I'm going to go, I have, on bridge repairs, eight-three-eight-six. We had nothing budgeted, or we spent nothing anyhow. I don't know if anything was budgeted in sixteen-seventeen, but there was nothing spent on bridge treatment. Cost of materials to treat bridges has risen, is what Lori had said. And I just, it's four thousand dollars is what we're putting in. Could you give me an idea what that is?
Yes. When Kyle was in my position, we cleaned our concrete bridges, meaning we hosed them down, got, washed the salt off of them. Salt can cause quite damage to the concrete. And then we coat them with a sealant that will protect our bridges longer. And it's that cost of that material.
Has it been in the budget prior to seventeen-eighteen? It has been. Because it, there's nothing there for, that goes back, so I was just curious.
Traditionally, for years, it was funded at a thousand dollars.
Right.
And then in a previous administration, it, it got dropped out of the budget. And now, we, we've, we've spent so much money as a town on these new bridges.
Do we put it in?
We want to make sure we, we keep up with them. Basically, what we look to do is every five years, we would recoat them with the, the new type sealants. The older bridges, like Severance Bridge Road, which have linseed oil on them, they're, they're, they should really be done every two years. But the washing of the bridges should happen every year. And we're working, Lori's working with the fire department to use one of their old tanker trucks to, to supply the water for us. Because the, the key to getting the salt off is volume of water. And we wash the, the edges of the bridge, the copings, the underside where the bearings are. And really, it, it makes a tremendous difference in the lifespan of the bridges.
How many concrete bridges do we have in town?
Seven.
Can you lift them? I'm just kidding.
This is a quiz?
No, I do want to know, actually. I mean, if you know, stop your head.
Severance Bridge Road, Turkey Hill Road, two Bedford Roads, well, one Bedford Road, soon to be two when we replace it. Bean Road, McGaw Bridge Road.
Okay.
US Route Three over Babuza Brook. I mean, over, yeah.
Give me a good idea of what a concrete bridge is.
Yep. And the Chamberlain Bridge is half stone, half gone green.
Seven and a half.
So you washed half the bridge in?
Correct.
All right. Does anybody have anything further on highway? No, I guess we'll move on to equipment maintenance?
Very good. Lori will continue to join me here for this budget. The Equipment Maintenance Division maintains the town's fleet of vehic, fleet of vehicles and equipment for the police, state police department, fire, public works, and general government. The division is staffed by full, five full-time employees, which includes a foreman, three mechanic twos, and a mechanic one. Overall, the budget is up twenty-seven hundred dollars. The personnel costs, again, due to contractual raises, is up almost eleven thousand dollars. And our operating expenses are down eight thousand dollars. As you recall, we purchased new diagnostic equipment last year for the police vehicles and our, our six-wheel dump trucks. That was a one-time purchase, so that dropped out of the budget. There's no capital purchases anticipated in this budget, and really, most everything stayed about the same, minor adjustments to various lines. And with that, we can open it up to questions.
Anybody have anything on equipment maintenance? Nope. We're moving right along, it's a beautiful thing. Next, I just, I mean, there's really not much there. It's, next is number seventeen, Buildings and Grounds. Thank you, Lori.
The Buildings and Grounds Division maintains the Town Hall Complex, the Police Department, and the Adult Community Center Buildings and Grounds, along with Abbey Griff, Abbey Griffin Park and the gazebo area. The division is currently staffed by one full-time custodian and two part-time cleaners, one here in the, the Town Hall Buildings and one at the Police Department. Overall, our budget, we're proposing a budget increase of a hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars in this budget. And Eileen spoke well of both of the, of the reasons for, for this big increase. The first is operating expenses and personnel. Again, those first two categories of the budget, we're proposing a fifty-eight thousand dollar increase. Most of that is due to adding a second full-time custodian position, which we desperately need. The second big cost in that is the Town Hall HVAC Improvement Project, which Eileen also mentioned. And what that would do is get rid of those twenty-two PTAC units. As Eileen described, those are the type of cheap units you'd see in a hotel. Anyone who's had a meeting, conservation commission, whatever, in the memorial meeting room, has dealt with the, the noise, the uneven heat, and just, you know, the, the awfulness that they are. In the past six months, as Eileen mentioned, two of them actually did catch on fire and the fire department had to respond. Fortunately, they put themselves out and nothing was damaged, other than the units themselves. But, but they're, they're just not great, and they're, they're not very fuel efficient either. So over the past number of months, we hired HL Turner, which is the company that's working with us on the highway garage project, to do an evaluation of the HVAC in the, in both the PD and the, the Town Hall. And in Town Hall, specifically focusing on the first floor of the east building, where all of those units are. At the end of, of their study, their recommendation was to replace all of those units with a central, a central furnace unit that would be located in the basement with branches going to each of the offices on the first floor and getting rid of the PTAC units altogether. The total proposed cost for that project is two hundred forty thousand dollars. The reason they recommended that, however, it's, it is a huge initial expense. Looking over a twenty-year lifecycle cost, however, it's actually cheaper than staying with what we have. If we kept what we have and replaced those as, as their predicted failure presents, which is about eight to ten years, they're scheduled to last, it's actually only an eight-year pay, payback on our money going with the, the more expensive central system. And then from there, you know, it's, it's, it's paid for itself, in addition to the long-term savings of, of fuel economy with the, the central systems that, that we would get, plus the comfort level in each of the offices, the noise level in each of the offices. So we, we recommend going with that option.
Eileen, just throwing things at me to get my attention. Not really.
No, I'm just like waving.
I'll stop. I just, no, no, I, my, it's my problem-
No, 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 it's not you.
-because I'm looking at my budget, forgetting that there's anything around me going on, so.
Exactly. So what I wanted to ask Kyle is, I know with electricity projects that the, you know, there are rebates available, and this is a gas project. And have you looked into any potential rebates from the gas company that they are offering?
We haven't yet, and that wasn't part of that. So I, I think you're correct, that we would see some savings for that project.
Though what I'm saying is, do they actually give you rebates like the electric would?
They would, for sure.
Yeah. So I think that needs to be investigated before we, we move forward with this in the budget, because sometimes it could be a good amount of money.
Right, I can make that phone call.
Okay, thank you.
For sure.
On, staying with eighty-five oh two, you said replacement windows. How many windows are they going to replace in phase two? Guesstimate, I mean.
We're, we're hoping to do this whole building with the ten thousand dollars. We just bid out windows for the other building, which was thirty-two windows, and that came out to, that was, the, the bids came in between eighteen and twenty-five thousand dollars. These windows, of course, are much bigger, much older, they have the old pulley systems. So I don't actually have a good sense of what these windows will cost. But our hope is to get this whole building.
Okay. And the same windows, these windows are the old ones? They just cased around them and everything?
Yes.
Oh, didn't even know that. Looks beautiful on the inside.
It does.
If you don't open them.
Many of them don't open anymore, as a matter of fact.
Kyle, what, what would custodian be responsible for? Would it be repairs also?
Yeah, the custodian would be, really be responsible for everything that, that we do. They would share responsibility. In the winter, certainly, this time of year, would be helping with the, the sidewalk maintenance, the parking lot maintenance of, of the areas that our contract plows don't do, treating the walkways. But they, the, the biggest reason for the position is, you recall back in two thousand and ten, that we, we spent a lot of money rehabbing both of these buildings to, to where they looked, you know, fantastic. Right after that, we had the layoff of, of the positions in Buildings and Grounds. And since then, you know, everything is, is maintained pretty well, because everything was brand new. Everything is starting to show its age, and, and really, we have a responsibility to, to maintain that investment. The, the two part-time cleaners, the part-time cleaner here maintains twenty-four thousand square feet of offices, meeting space, five bathrooms, three kitchens. It's a tremendous amount of effort to do in four hours a night. And we're not able to accomplish things like stripping and mopping, stripping and waxing floors, really dusting into the corners, you know, getting, getting the deep cleaning things. I've got a list if, if you don't, if you want me to go into-
No need, no need, but I, I've noticed that.
But so, so the basic, the basic reasons are the winter maintenance and the deferred cleaning and maintenance, in addition to working projects, like we were just talking about, the HVAC project. When the PTAC units are pulled out, one of the ways we can save money on the projects is now that we have two people, hopefully, in the division, they would be able to, to, once the units are removed from the wall, they'd be able to patch the hole in the wall, put the siding on on the outside, paint the inside. We wouldn't have to hire a contractor for that cost in those kind of projects. We, we currently have a temporary person filling a custodian role here that we were able to get in. And some of the projects that we've accomplished then, patching a bunch of holes in the walls, painting, painting, painting a number of rooms in the, in this building. They've been painting the downstairs of the police department, which hasn't been done in twenty-two years. They've been augmenting the cleaning at the police department. Again, we have one person over there four hours a day, and that includes all the jail cells, the, the bathrooms, the meeting rooms, the lobby area, which, you know, they're a twenty-four-seven operation. It gets very dirty very quickly. And, and there's just too much work to do for, for one person in four hours. So again, maintenance has fallen behind. Since we've had the temporary position in, and if you'd like the chief to come up and speak, I know this is why she's here tonight. The, the conditions at the police department have improved greatly, just that little bit of effort. And what, what, Eileen alluded to, some meetings that we've had, interdepartment meetings- And what Eileen alluded to, some meetings that we've had, interdepartmental meetings. What we're proposing is part of this, so the position would be funded out of Buildings and Grounds. But five, what we've done so far is five hours would be dedicated a week just to supplement the Police Department cleaning. Eight hours would be attributed to Parks and Recreation. We've started renting out the function hall. And unfortunately, they don't have staff. Matt's there mopping floors.
Shoveling.
Sweeping, shoveling. This position would augment that over there. And what I've told Eileen I could accommodate is eight hours a week on average to help out over at Parks and Recreation. So that's kind of a quick hitter of what we propose with the position. I feel strongly that it's, in all of the public works budgets, it's the number-one priority that we need to fill.
It was a bad idea when it happened back in two thousand and ten. And everything you've alluded to is correct. It's just we've fallen gradually behind, and it's almost impossible to get it all done. So, I'm supportive of the move. Just me. Although you didn't have to know that tonight, I suppose.
It'll help me sleep tonight.
Great, Kyle. Glad I could be of assistance. Jackie?
It seemed like the biggest thing we lost when we lost those two workers was people who were loyal to the town, worked for the town, and kept their eyes open.
And at the same time, actually, a few years before, the heaters were another bad move in the same, anyhow. It's annoying to me. And that's what I was focused on when Eileen was waving over here. But is there anything further on Buildings and Grounds? No. All right. We'll move on. Pardon me? Nope. Move on to oh-seven, Public Works Administration. Oof. That happened one time. They cut a position that had solid waste with a gentleman presenting that, and they said, "Well, we're going to eliminate that position." So it was, it was not real pretty. Oh-seven, yes. Kyle?
Thank you. Joining me for the Public Works Administration and Engineering portion is Don Twamala, our Deputy Director and Town Engineer. The Administration Engineering Division is responsible for directing and managing all functions of the department, developing and implementing the capital improvement program, and performing engineering functions for town departments. We currently have a staffing of three full-time and two summer interns. Overall, our budget is proposed to be up two-point-six percent, which is almost ten thousand dollars. The biggest chunk of that increase is we're proposing to add a third engineering intern to this budget. Don was here a few meetings ago to show you guys our proposed drainage inspection program. And this is a key piece to accomplishing our goals. The first two interns that we've consistently had would continue to do the functions they typically have over the years. GIS work, stormwater work, surveying work, paving inspections, those kind of things. This position would focus on stormwater pipe inspections. And it'll be, you'll see another intern proposal when we get to the wastewater budget. So the two would kind of work together, using the new camera system, which Don showed you at a previous meeting. And with that, there's not much else in the budget, so I'll open it up to questions.
Great. Thanks, Kyle. Does anybody have anything for Kyle?
The Drainage Inspection Program, or the DIP. We were.
Very appropriate.
Don and I were disappointed, because she had DIP right on the front screen, and nobody got the joke, I guess.
They're too subtle for us.
It's not great, but it's what we've got.
Okay. Nobody has any questions? Very good.
Perfect.
Thanks, Don.
Thanks, Don. And finally, we'll move into wastewater treatment. And Jim Taylor will be joining us for his final budget review, so feel free to.
Is that Jim Taylor?
Grill him.
Jim Taylor didn't have a beard before. This is a different Jim Taylor.
That's a different one.
This is almost retired Jim Taylor. I was going to say, he's a short timer right now.
This is getting into retirement mode.
The beard suits you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the wastewater division provides environmental service to our community through monitoring, collecting, and treating the wastewater from the town of Merrimack in a manner that surpasses our federal discharge limitations. And we produce a Class A compost material that surpasses all federal and state requirements. The division has twenty-one full-time employees and one part-time employee. It's important to note, Eileen mentioned it earlier, that this budget is not funded from the tax base. It's funded by the user fees paid by those that are actually connected to the sewer, the townwide sewer. And we're also very proud that our facility remains in the lowest ten sewer rates in the state. The two thousand and thirteen average fee around the state was five hundred dollars per year for residential. And us today, we're still only at two-hundred forty-two dollars. There's no proposed rate increase in this year's budget for the user fees. And overall, the budget is down two-point-eight percent. And again, largely, that's due to capital projects that were done last year that aren't being replicated this year. Personal services and operating expenses are up three-point-four percent. One of the items that's part of that is, as I just mentioned, we're proposing to add a summer intern in the wastewater division to help with the sewer pipe inspection project. And really, the two interns would work together on a team. Some days, they'd be doing sewer. Some days, they'd be doing stormwater inspections. Some notable items from the budget, the eighty-two forty-one and eighty-two forty-two budgets are both down. That's the electric and natural gas. Some of that is attributed to the Phase Two upgrades that we completed two years ago. We've got an increase in the eighty-three eleven line. That's our chemicals, of twenty-four thousand. We've got a big industrial user in town that has recently proposed a change in their process. So we're anticipating that change, and we would need to purchase more chemicals to handle the different waste stream that they'll be sending us. And I'll note that if they do send us that additional flow, there'll be an offsetting revenue that will more than cover this, this twenty-four thousand dollars. Exactly. Yep. Equipment purchases, we're proposing to replace our two thousand and six front-end loader. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions. Again, our humor's not good.
Back to your humor, yeah.
But it's ours.
It's all we've got. Sorry.
This is an end-of-night slide.
That's what you got. It's only amongst yourselves.
We're very proud of the clean water we provide at the end.
That's right. We appreciate that. Paint paper, though, that's different.
Does anybody have anything for Kyle? No, see, nothing. Oh, Bill's got something.
So we're looking at four interns altogether, two through administration, two through wastewater?
Three in administration, one in wastewater. Correct.
Okay, because I see on page one thirty-nine under eighty-one oh seven, it's listed as two interns under wastewater treatment. Which I would interpret that to be five now, as opposed to four.
That's a typo. It should just be one.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. And the other, not to backtrack, but the two administrative interns going to work on the engineering stuff that you've done in the past that they've helped you with?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yeah. One of the great things they do is they augment our other programs. For example, the two hundred thousand dollars in the stormwater improvements that you see in every budget. They often will do the surveying for those kind of projects. We don't have to hire them out. So just by them surveying one project, they more than pay for themselves each year.
Okay.
And we get all sorts of other benefits out of them.
I don't mean to touch the third rail of stormwater, but are they going to be providing any assistance regarding the MS four piece? Or is it strictly going to be the identifying of existing stormwater, for lack of a better word, portals in town?
Because we're still functioning on our two thousand and three permit.
Right.
There's really no new requirements to meet. We're just keeping status quo. So in the last couple of years, we haven't, the interns haven't spent much effort on stormwater. Once we get the new permit, that'll be a chief focus again of the interns, as it was back in two thousand and six, seven timeframe.
Okay.
Where they were taking pictures and inventorying every stormwater outfall that we had.
No, I think, based on the presentation that Don had made several weeks ago regarding the inspection of the stormwater pipes, to me, that's, I don't see that as like, you know, how do I put this? It's not at a Danger Wall Robinson phase, but it's at a critical stage where we need to know specifically where we need to be planning and budgeting for the future to fix those problems.
Definitely. It will allow us to plan for the future expenditures and know where to best spend our money.
Okay. Okay. The other question that I have, maybe more directed towards, I'm sorry, follow-up, Mr. Chairman, sure. Thank you. More directed towards Jim. I know that we had talked, the state had come in and done an examination for PFOAs, PFOSs in the wastewater. I know we got a relatively good report. Are we going to be doing any type of additional planning moving forward with the wastewater piece that is reflected in your budget, or is it something?
Yeah, no, there is funding in there for that. Currently, there is no approved analytical method for testing wastewater and solids. There's only a drinking water method. EPA should, within the next few months, come out with a recommendation on a method. So, in anticipation of that, we did put funding in there to do a mass balance, essentially, look at all our inputs, look at what's happening with the compost and also with the planaflon. So.
And that's basically for us to have for, excuse me, for wastewater treatment, to kind of have like a baseline in case the state comes back and say, "We're seeing this," and like, "Well, here's a report that we did showing this particular," and it allows the wastewater unit to have a conversation with obviously DES about.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
And you can find that, Bill, in the line eighty-three fifty-nine, Other Outside Services. You'll see a nineteen thousand dollar increase in that line.
Okay.
It's a characterization study Jim just spoke about.
Is that an outside consultant, or are we doing that in-house?
We'll be doing that in-house.
We, I don't want to sound incredulous, but we have the expertise to do that.
Yeah, we actually do.
Wow, that's impressive. Okay. Okay. Good deal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
You're welcome.
Here. I don't have a question. I just want to say, and I know Jim's on his big final tour here, but I've worked with Jim over the years. And the town's been lucky to have you.
I appreciate it.
Your staff does a great job, and you've done a fantastic job.
Thank you. I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I've enjoyed my job and working with all of you very much.
Are there going to be tour T-shirts available for sale? James Taylor Wastewater Tour two thousand and eighteen?
Absolutely.
But you have to come to the plant to see it.
I'll giddy up. I like that.
Well, that's not happening. We have to clean out the clarifier to get one, right?
There you go.
We talked about, when we're talking Parks and Rec, about the allocation. In wastewater, the allocation is two-hundred eighty-two thousand dollars that this enterprise fund gives towards as a revenue into the general fund. Due to the fact of the number of employees they have, the amount of Jim's budget versus the overall DPW budget in the allocation scheme. I did want to mention that. It's two-hundred eighty-two thousand dollars that, and that's my staff time, that's Eileen's staff's time to process payroll and invoices and everything that goes along with it. Tax collector staff time to do the billing for residential. And some of our commercial gets billed out through the tax collector. So they do pay their fair share to have these services as part of the enterprise fund.
Yep. Great. I just want to go back real quick to Buildings and Grounds. I was going to ask you, it just got away from me. Everything with the state of New Hampshire with the court over here, you know, where does that show up? It shows up on the revenue sheet?
That shows up on the revenue sheet. And we potentially could look at increasing the amount we charge them. Since they moved them, we haven't really increased that amount. It's been fifteen thousand dollars, and it's been fifteen thousand dollars consistently for parking lot maintenance. And they take care of their own lawn. They take care of their own water bills. So really, all we're doing is maintaining the parking lot in winter operations and making sure it's clean during the summer.
And is that kind of equate to half of what the total bill would be for those items?
Well, we can review it one more time, but it's, the last time I reviewed it, which was a year ago, it was almost break-even.
Okay.
In and out, we look at, you know, repaving schedules, you know, kind of like a capital reserve. We figure out how often it needs to be done, striping the lines in the parking lot, the electricity from the lights.
So what kind of, sorry about that, including that into our total picture?
Correct. When we did the original.
Yeah.
Look forward of what their fair share was, we took all of that into account.
Okay. Very good. And so if it should be changed, but if not, it's, all right. And Jim, absolutely. I'm disappointed you're leaving, but I'm excited for you nonetheless.
Well, again, thank you very much. It's really been a pleasure. It's been a great job, and I've enjoyed, you know, serving the town.
It's been, it's done some wonderful things. Did you say it's April? Is that what you told me?
April, yeah, April twenty-seventh. So fifty-eight working days, three months and eight days. I don't have it down.
The last time I counted like that, I was getting out of the arm.
Sure.
He has the hour clock going and is off.
Very, very good. Thank you so much.
We're preparing the roast for him.
Thanks, Jim.
Jim, thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Does anybody have anything further? Nope, if not.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilboy. Second. Second by Tom Thornton. Those in favor, second by, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Six zero zero. Thank you.